Good evening, now time is six of four, let me call to order the special joint workshop by and between the Town Council and 4A EDC Board of Directors and 4B EDC Board of Directors. For the record, all council members are present except Mr. McNeil. McNeil will probably miss the workshop unless it runs late. Terry?
I want to call the 4A portion of the meeting to order. All members are present, we do have a forum.
I'll call the 4B board members present for this meeting. All present except Member Van Bessem, Member Bradford and Member Torres.
We have a call?
Yes, we have a call.
Tracy, how do you want to this one? You've attended solid 4A and we should come to some talking with Stacy and what's the plans?
So first of all, thank you all for attending tonight. We kind of started this joint work session to talk about some items that have been on the strategic plan for the Economic Development Board and just trying to get some feedback from council on how to move forward on some items that we kind of have outstanding and seeing what everybody's thoughts, opinions, ideas, concepts are to be able to move forward. With that being said, I've printed out the agenda and we'll kind of go down the line for the agenda. Please don't freak out for those that have seen the slideshow. I've thought together like a hundred slide slideshow, but the only reason it's that way is to accommodate for any thoughts, questions that I've heard about, I've had discussions with others about. So that way it's in here and there's pictures, there's visuals so that everybody can get an idea of the way things will grow, the way things could possibly be. Doesn't mean we'll go through every single slide individually.
Are we going to go through that presentation before we get to the agenda?
No, the presentation is kind of just goes along hand in hand with the agenda. So as we talk about things, we can go through certain slides. And so what we're kind of doing, even though we've called the B, well, there is a public forum section, so I don't know if anybody in the public...
What was that? I'm sorry. We have a public forum, if anyone would like to come and talk to the boards and council, you may use that at this time.
That'll be you, Derek. If there's any confusion, that's you.
Yeah, just turn it on at the bottom.
Is it on? Possibly. Okay, well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm Derek Solser, 345 New Hill Road, Sunnyvale. Thank you to all three organizations, 4A, 4B and council for your support of Next Door Project. We are almost a month into construction, which means maybe just two weeks in because of all the weather challenges we've had, but so far, so good. And I hope we're being a good neighbor and as always, let me know if something doesn't look right. Come, my number's on that sign out there, so give me a call, but thank you so much for your support.
Thanks, Derek. And now this is coming forward, so I'm going to call the public forum. But then that call to Tracy.
So even though we've called 4B to order at this point, most of their conversations are going to be towards the downtown development and further. So it'll just be a discussion right now between the 4A and Town Council. And with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Terry.
Okay, as you look at the agenda, some of the things that the 4A board wanted to talk about was just our day-to-day activities that we want to put into our plan, our strategic plan. One of them is business retention and expansion, or what we call BRE. We're talking about hosting a BRE event. We were going to try to do that in January, but we put that off until probably the summer of 2019 because we want that to be the first event at the barn at Long Creek and kind of partner with her and bring a nice event to her facility. And then Tracy's already started hosting roundtable events. They had a realtor one and a primary industry one. I'm not sure which ones you're working on next.
Right now, we're focusing on another industry roundtable. There was two of our industries that attended the one that we hosted and they thought it was such a good idea to be able to come back for, so they want to see another one in January. So it's put on their calendars for January to be able to have another one for that.
Tracy wants the end goal of this roundtable. What do you hope your companies?
For the industry roundtable specifically, what the goal is for that is that it's peer-to-peer interaction as well as being able to develop that relationship between town staff and our primary industries. So what came out of the one we had was that we have a lot of workforce issues and it's not just here. It's we need skilled laborers that just aren't available right now at this point in time. So being able to work with them and get the workforce commission out here to be able to help them and see how we can move forward and what they see as trends going forward. Also in that meeting, we had our building official and planner in there. So if they had any development questions, then they could talk to them directly and kind of get some of those things that they had questions on. When it came to the realtor roundtable, it was just kind of a point of building those relationships, seeing who our realtors are, telling what's going on in Sunnyvale so that they can go out and preach the things that we're doing because those, the realtors are our firsthand people. They're out there selling the homes, they're out there selling land. And so if we can keep them up to date on what's going on in Sunnyvale, then they can better spread what's going on.
Do they come back and tell us during the event what is it that council or the town can do so that they can bring in the type of developments we wish we had, not just a bunch of houses or apartments, but rather pointing to systems reduction?
Most of the ones that attended that were residential realtors. And the biggest thing that helped them was just being able to have some maps of the different developments, residential neighborhoods. So we put together a bunch of maps for them to be able to take and share the properties and people whenever they're coming in. So I didn't have feedback as far as development from that specific event.
I could tell you, being attending that event, it kind of grew out of something that Mesquite does every year and they get a large turnout for that and it's a great presentation. They get superintendent, police chief, mayor, I forget who else in there. It's a tight program, we took Tracy to it this year to see what it's like. And it can be a great information source. Now, we're different, we're a much smaller town and the realtors that work in here, there's a handful that do a lot of business and then some, you know, not as much. So it's hard drawing people in from much around the area, but it can be a very useful time. And I thought it was a great launch to something that hopefully is an annual event that we can do that, so.
So is the composition of the group, for instance, this past meeting you had was the composition of that, not only town staff and whoever we represent out of it, but did it also include some existing industry people so that they could talk with potential new people who would have come to that roundtable? Or were there ever any new people that were invited from the industry side?
From the industry side, it was only our existing businesses. So we had Vintagian and McAlway Metal. So I mean, the idea of that is just to build the relationships with our existing investors.
So in future meetings, would it be broadcast in such a way that other possible industries would be... Hey, Sunnyvale's going to have this roundtable, we ought to go look at it and see. And then also if you've got good, if we have good rapport with the Vintagians, and I think we do, and other of the businesses, and I apologize, I can't count them out, but that we have some of their people who are on the positive side, which I think is majority, as being, you know, they can be their own group that talks. And maybe that's not what the intent of the roundtable was, but I'm just trying to get the word spread of the positive vibe that you get not only from our town staff, but you also get the positive vibe from existing businesses within the meeting.
And it could. I think what it originally set out to be for was just for our businesses. And then essentially what will come of that is that if they feel the positivity from the town, then they can go out and market them, so I can use them as advocates to be able to attract other employers.
Because one of the things that economic development corporations do is have business retention and expansion programs because we want to take care of our existing businesses. We don't want to lose them. Several years back, Marazzi Tile expanded and that was a good thing that we kept them. They were thinking about moving out of town. And so hosting these things are just to find out what our existing businesses need from us. Trying to keep them here.
And the water line is a good example of that.
Yes, and I was going to mention that, yeah.
A major point for business retention was the water line.
And that's why we participated in that because the industrial park is a big part of our property tax base, so. Does council have any comments on that section?
If you have something feedback from the business people, that things, regulations, things of the nature, council can look into this, request it from that. If you have a broad network with your job and checkup on this, if you get things, what is the reason? Obviously, you have a moment to be on the work around, right?
Because, you know, he mentioned the city of Mesquite and just because they're our neighbor, they have like a quarterly BRE that I get invited to as because Encore has a business in Mesquite, so. Any other comments or questions?
No, I just personally think we've got to, we've just got to really reach out to those businesses, make them feel wanted, really, can we partner with you? What can we do to help you? Really create that positive vibe, I think is a great thing to press to do. It's starting and some of it's been there, I know in the past with different people, but we have a real emphasis for them.
So do you think what we're doing right now is good enough or we have to go more than what we do?
I mean, with something like this, in my opinion, you've got to kind of ease into it. I say quality over quantity when it comes to that kind of stuff. Do a good program, don't do a bunch of them just for your ends, is my opinion, but by all means.
I mean, I guess the other, sorry Kevin, that, you know, you're taking that a step further. So I have lunch and just step one-on-one with the industries too to find out what we can do for them or find out more about their business and just kind of building that relationship with them so that if there ever is an issue and development services will tell you, they get frustrated because sometimes they do have relationships with me, they pick up the phone and they call me and sometimes don't go to who they need to go to. So then it's, well, have you talked to development services and getting it back on track to where, you know, I can kind of facilitate some of that, but I, they're the ones you need the answers from. And then working on surveys to establish where they are now to date so that when we look at them in a year, we also find out if there's any red flags on them closing down or are they looking at expanding and kind of making sure we're ahead of the game on any of that stuff that they're doing.
How do you decide what industries we go after? Like, are you looking at restaurants, you know, the restaurant industry, you know, the other types of industries?
So we can move right on into recruitment and that's kind of, our target industries. We kind of, we have a lot of aerospace here, we have a lot of manufacturing, more so it's heavy industrial considered, but you wouldn't know it from being out there. Retail, restaurants, all of that is being looked at right now. So I mean, it's kind of an open canvas on what we have here because it's a broad base from heavy manufacturing all the way down to primary medical office space. I know nobody likes to hear medical office, but some of the things that the retailers look at are daytime population numbers. And you'll kind of get a sense for some of that. We have our current daytime population is only about 5,100. But when you look at what retailers are looking at, and you can't see it in this chart, but their daytime populations range from 6,000 for a tropical cafes mini place up to 75,000 daytime population for a Le Madeline's. So when we're looking at what we can get here, then you're kind of having to look at some of those demographics and those numbers as well that the retailers are looking at. We have the vehicles per day and some of this other stuff, you'll see that we kind of have, here's our three mile radius. We have some of the numbers that we need as far as population within that, but if it's a lunchtime crowded retail, then they need the daytime numbers. So that's where we're trying to get those things that everybody doesn't want, really, medical office space. Those are things we need to be able to justify some of those numbers.
And we definitely want to recruit restaurants and entertainment and retail. I'm not sure why that's not part of that recruitment list on the agenda.
More so for, so right now, because we're under 7,500 in population, 4A and 4B can do the same thing. But when we hit that 7,500 mark, then they split off and 4A will not be able to do retail recruitment things for the retail restaurant side of things. So I've tried to go ahead and split the two in that concept so that we're kind of looking at it differently, if at all possible. So really what 4A does is they focus on the primary industries. 4B focuses on retail restaurant side. So that's why that portion of it wasn't in the recruitment side for the 4A.
I do see that under 4B, sorry.
What's our current population?
Our current population, we're saying is about 6,400. You won't see that in the information or the data that has been provided. So in 2015, it's kind of interesting, in 2015, and it's not on this one, in 20, this number's from 2017. They're saying that our 2017 estimated population was 5,640. Well, where all our documentations, Rashad and I have gone back and forth on this, all of our documentation show closer to 6,200. And we've kind of fought it, but right now, that's all that they have physically been able to show that is available. In 2015, there was another number that came about that was actually higher. Don't look at that number because that's a three mile radius. But the 2017 data showed up less population than the 2015 data did. So they're actually doing another study for me right now, but it won't be done right now. We just see where that difference is because they went back through everything that they could think of and they could not figure out why the data...
Who's they, Dave?
The retail coach. We hired the retail coach back in 2015 and then hired him again in 2017. And now they're, for no cost, they're going to do a 2018 one for us as well.
Where's the school district at their data? They've got a warrant on the facilities, the school district, and I think their numbers are quite a bit higher.
They had a demographic study done, I know, last year, that's what they based those freezing nickels kind of. I'm looking for it now, that's what I was looking for. I had it somewhere.
And I think Freezing Nickels on the comp plan showed... As of January 2017, they showed the population at 6,044.
I think Freezing Nickels probably has some information.
And so that was where some of the retail coach said that some of the numbers, if you do zip code only, then you get one number. If you do maybe the school district boundary, that was another number. If you do Sunnyvale...
Zip code, school district boundary should be in Sunnyvale.
There was another number, anyway, there was another number that pulled out that it was different, that they were ringing up. It was zip code and then something else.
Okay, but one of mine is the...
Anyway, we're around 6,100, 6,200 population.
And we got to get 7,500, Zach?
No, that's just to separate the two.
No, I'm talking about the daytime business.
No, the daytime population should be over 10,000 at the minimum.
So I have a question for you and it has to be before we try to target a daytime operation. Will we ever reach 10,000 population in Sunnyvale realistically? And if so, how far out is that? Because I think that dictates the direction that you're going to go with that.
Now, that, there's a difference between daytime population and the population. So your daytime population is your workforce who's coming here to be able to provide those numbers. It's not necessarily your residential population.
Okay, if we re-ask that then, how's that, what is our daytime operation number now? Again, how far off are we from that?
So our approximate daytime population right now is 5,100.
That's probably mainly in the industrial park and the hospital. So a lot of retailers and especially restaurants will look at, especially for lunch, how many workers, what's your daytime population? How many people are going to come eat at my restaurant on their lunch break?
I think the question then is what does it take and how long does it take on a term? Before we get to the magic number of 10,000, it's doubling our daytime population. If it's going to have to double before we can see a marketable increase, a question would beg to be asked, are we going in the right direction if we're pushing that?
Oh, great questions.
You don't have the answer for that?
So a lot of, so the reason QuickTrip is coming is because they feel like the vehicles per day along 80 are going to justify what they need. So with their numbers, with them coming in, with Chick-fil-A coming in, hopefully some of that will drive other people to see that there is a market for that particular area. And some of those numbers are still, we do have the residential trade area numbers, we do have the vehicles per day. So we have 75% of what they're looking for, it's just that daytime population number that becomes the key.
Thank you.
Okay, you want me to go ahead and move on then to the...
Is that circle or is that Sunnyvale?
The circle, so you're going to have to look outside of Sunnyvale proper and look at your trade area which encompasses some of the seat. So there's a difference. So this is considered our trade area map currently.
I think it's all a pretty cross. Looks like. So how far is it going? It's not even getting to 635, right?
No, sir. Because most of 635 is already taken care of by all the restaurants and stuff along 635. So they won't encompass any of that because it's our, the retail is already in those areas. So that is our trade area and if you just draw a three mile radius around Sunnyvale, you look at that.
It's actually a three mile radius from the intersections of Collins and E.
Which doesn't even get off Sunnyvale.
Which doesn't get off Sunnyvale.
But, and I can send this to everybody afterwards, but when you see then in the little numbers you can't see, you'll see laid out some of the ones that talk about the residential population within how many miles or within the trade area and the same thing with daytime population within how many miles. And so that's when the maps really come into play on what your drive time is, your trade area or your radius. So there's several different ways to look at it and it depends on what that actual retailer is looking for. Are they looking for a 15-minute drive time? That's more your regional type restaurants, retailers. Is it just a one mile radius where you see McDonald's or Starbucks on every corner? So it just depends on the retailer.
Tracy, I already have a light in number one, but just one quick question. So if you're trying to bring businesses to the AD and Collins area, makes sense, then this three mile radius makes sense. If you also have shopping area on Beltline on both sides, if you draw that three mile radius, I assume it's completely protected by.
That one will encompass some of Garland, right?
Yes.
Unless the argument is that Garland and Mesquite businesses, existing businesses already serve that population and there's not much to trouble.
Right, I guess who, so following upon what he's asking, who creates this? And is this what we take then to the potential businesses that want to come in here? And we put it, we package it up and say, hey, here's Sunnyvale, here's how pretty we are? Is that what we do? So is there a way to strategically move that circle around for different areas, for different types of businesses, whatnot? Can we use Town East for the center of the circle?
Yes, so the retail coach has done that and they based it on different areas. But this one was focused kind of on the AD and Collins corridor because that's kind of where our focus has been. So that's why these are more to that area. But yes, they can potentially put a three mile radius around Beltline and Town East or a trade area or a drive time around that area. So we can definitely maneuver these numbers based on area.
Three mile areas overlap each other?
They do, again, it just kind of depends on what type of restaurant it is or what they're looking for and how they want to use that data. So a lot of what may seem in the three mile area on Town East and Belt, Town East and Beltline, we're not going to go after because it's already right down the street. So it's just a matter of kind of then taking all that data and seeing what's there, what's left to recover.
So are there retailers that draw from a larger radius?
Yes, so like your Cracker Barrel, those that are more of a regional destination place as opposed to your everyday retailers.
Is it possible to target more like that?
Yes, which is the hope of what Sunnyvale Center is, it's more the regional destination draw. That's what the hope is.
And isn't it going to depend on where that business or restaurant wants to locate as to what radius they're going to look at?
Correct, they all look at something different, it's just a matter of figuring out what they, what they're looking at.
Is the retail coach a consultant we use or software?
Yes, consulting, yeah. A lot of EDCs use them, either them or Catalyst.
We have somebody in our contract that does all this.
They're a good organization, a lot of EDCs use them.
And we just use them periodically whenever we need some data or information.
So you only have eight varieties, you know?
Okay, all right, so we'll move on to top priorities. Beautification, gateway signage and the industrial park. So what the 4A board talked about was wanting to add some additional signage, like the sign there you see up there that we have here out at AD and Collins, maybe on Beltline Road and some type of signage to show that you're entering Sunnyvale. And then another thing we talked about was doing some beautification to the industrial park. And we talked to David Jackson about partnering with him, doing some stuff inside the park as well, but maybe some stuff on the median out there because that is a gateway into town. And if that were spewed up a little bit, it would just make the town look better as a whole. And I don't want to do all the talking, so you guys, anybody, I know we've been talking about that. I know we've been talking about beautification and gateway signage for a while.
Yeah, I think branding is very important and that's what we need, brand our towns. I think that's a great idea that we've talked about before, we have to do so then.
We looked at what Mesquite did on the corner of Trip and Beltline too. They did a pretty good job of their establishing their brand there as well. And we can do something similar to that coming on Trip into Sunnyvale or down Beltline as well. I think we talked about that, either into Beltline and then some more branding along Collins Road, but we're sort of limited now because whatever we do there may be temporary because they're going to widen that.
So Paul, let me ask the dumb question again. So Beltline and Trip, Mesquite spent a lot of money. And again, I heard a comment from different people, it's nice, did that really impact their commercial base?
I don't remember, honestly.
No, it doesn't, and sometimes in things like that, you've got to look at just it's a quality of life, it doesn't necessarily have an ROI, it's just your beautification for what you and your citizens want to see the town look like and get a feel for. Doesn't necessarily have an impact, especially that particular area. And I'm not saying that some towns in their gateway areas or the signages don't enhance that to where more businesses are coming around, but in our instance, we don't have those areas that would be enhanced necessarily for development because of the sign.
Yeah, I'm not against it, just simply asking a question.
Did you remember, did you remember too, how Trip rode when it crossed Beltline there? Is it a little two-lane blacktop? And they were really forced to go ahead and widen that thing. So then they had to redo the bridge at the same time, so they, and it's my understanding that their 4B corporation paid for that, you don't.
So what is the 4B or the 4A?
And in some respects...
It's a quality of life, it's really a 4A project.
So they were sort of forced to have to spend some money on that anyway and they just dolled it up pretty good and it was, it was good.
It also helps, you know, people take visual cues subconsciously when they come into an area about what their experience will be.
Absolutely.
So when you go shopping, you notice what's the signage look like, whether there's greenery in the parking lot. You notice those things, you don't think about them, you formulate an opinion about what your experience will be before you're even in there. I think those sorts of things would help brand Sunnyvale.
Because I've noticed Garland's done some of that as you enter their city too.
I really like the things I've seen Mesquite's done around town to make it look nicer. I really like the things I've seen Meske's done around town to make it look nicer.
Does that, is that something that you all would be okay with 4A spending money on?
Are these in priority, like how y'all see your priorities? Are these listed here in priority?
So, the priorities on this piece of paper are more for less controversial, quicker items to get in.
Like this is your top priority? Okay.
Well, I, I'd say they're, these are like our top three near-term goals that we're trying to accomplish. Putting one...
Four-term goals.
But, not in order.
We get incentives, incentives pop in our lap and we react to that. We have to. And you can't plan that and you don't know who's coming in. But, in the meantime, we can be doing this and it'd be great to do.
I was just wanting to get a feel for that. You thought your top priorities were, these are like short-term goals and long-term goals? Is how you see it?
These are near-term goals that we're, we've got a hundred grand in the budget this year.
That's why I was asking, so you've already...
For, for some signage, yes.
And then I saw the estimated cost of those monuments and we'll probably come back and say, can we use off that a little bit?
There's always some intangibles from, using Gateway at Tripp and Beltline because number one, we've only got to build one corner. That's going to be cheaper than the ski. Second of all, that's a floodplain corner. So, it gives us the opportunity to get that out of floodplain. And third, it probably gives us the opportunity to try to put in a right-turn lane. Might as well improve the intersection while you're doing it. Don't put the Gateway, don't put the sign there and then figure out, oh, we'll put a right-turn lane. So, there's probably not only some 4B, 4A money, sorry, 4A money, but there's probably some amenity money coming out of Homestead for that corner, that intersection. So, you know, nobody's going to build on that corner because nobody's going to build on the exact corner because of the floodplain. But, we can take it out of the floodplain, enhance the intersection, perhaps get the right-turn lane in there. It's all several.
What are your thoughts on the industrial park?
Explain that. Beautification, just around the plant trees.
It's, it's a big, yeah, well, just probably in the median, you know, maybe, maybe some signage, but more we were talking about like some type of bushes or flowers in the, in the median and just kind of sprucing up that area because it is a gateway into, from Meske into Sunnyvale. And it just, it just doesn't look good.
And we had a well-organized tour of the industrial park with the owners. And they recognized the fact too that when you drive up to that, it's kind of post-apocalyptic.
It is.
Post-apocalyptic. I can't say the word. It, it is a pretty rough-looking part of town. And they understand and they realize that some, you know, drive-up appeal is necessary to help, you know, increase the number of, of tenants and owners that they have in that industrial park. We, we spent what, a million dollars roughly to in...
Well, half.
Half a million.
For the water, water, yeah.
To improve the water supply. Every bit of it's underground. You, I mean, nothing about that project improved the appearance whatsoever. A minimum of, you know, some crape myrtle trees and some nice signage in front, I think would enhance it tremendously.
There's a lot, lot of traffic.
And we have buy-in from the ownership as well.
Will they, will they match also? The, the industrial park, will they help?
They'll help. I, I don't know about match, but they'll help. They, they have some rather limited resources, but, but they would help.
We're, yes, going to take out the monument that is down at Collins and the service road. And that's going to all be redone.
Unless somebody hits it again.
You mean the target? I was like that.
Yeah, well, that's most of the time. So, if that could be moved to sign and, and clay.
Clay, math issue.
You know, this side of the road, that might value to maintain that, or that, or not have that expense if we can move that monument. Because it's going to go away anyway, you know, somebody could hit it again. But, and then build up some landscaping around it that's drought tolerant.
Right.
Would be tremendously good.
Can't kill an old crape myrtle, can you? Can't kill a crape myrtle.
Well, apparently not.
You can run over them though.
All right. So, we'll go ahead and, and move on to establish incentive, excuse me, incentive guidelines. And one of the things that the board talked about at our last board meeting is that a lot of our projects aren't a case-by-case basis. So, you really can't have a strict policy because it depends on what, how many jobs are bringing in, you know, what the sales tax is, what, you know, property taxes, et cetera. So, that, but we want to come up with some type of a guideline. So, at least we have a guideline to follow. And Paul, you can elaborate on that.
Well, we got it in the executive or the strategic plan. There's some outline, general outlines of what we consider positives for, for getting those incentives out. I would also include unusual uses that are favorable to the town and, and other things. So, it is hard to quantify it, but we can certainly put a little bit of a matrix together.
You want flexibility, that's what, hence the guide, not the rule.
Right.
Because I, I think when you, when you step into this area, you can, you can upset people pretty quickly if you don't have something to fall back on and say, this is what we look for, you know, early on in the, in the game to make sure that those incentives you're handing out are not, don't appear.
Bias.
Oh, I don't know.
Bias.
There's probably a matrix already out there somewhere. So, I mean, there's probably, instead of reinventing the wheel, I assume somebody...
I'm sure they established it before.
Does something, right?
Is that something you guys have developed?
Yes.
So, is it for 4A or is the expectation that the council at 4A would share the same matrix?
Tracy.
It's more for the, so the economic development will have theirs. And they've already kind of got one in place. We just need to fine-tune it a little bit to get a little more involved on the incentives based on, what are we looking at? What, what areas of town are more important than others? So, kind of weigh different things a certain way. Are we focused more on the capital investment? Are we focused more on the jobs? And so, those are the discussions that we're kind of having to figure out what our incentives based on will be. Like I said, we've already kind of got one in place, but just fine-tuning it a little bit. Yeah, absolutely not reinvent the wheel. There's several incentive guidelines and policies out there from all over the EDC. So, just kind of seeing what, what we want to do based on Sunnyvale.
So, this is on the, you guys have developed and no expenses?
Correct.
All good, yeah?
Sounds good.
Okay. Well, and then we'll move on to senior living in age-restricted communities. Now, when we talk about senior living, we're not talking about a nursing home. What we're talking about is, is a, is a senior living community or what was, I'm trying to think of the right word that we use for that.
An active, healthy lifestyle, living by the older.
Um, I, I think that there's some residents of Sunnyvale that would like to remain in Sunnyvale and may not be able to do that in their large home. And it would be nice if there was some type of a community to move into. I think we talked about it being a disposable income. You know, money that they would spend in Sunnyvale. It doesn't affect the school district because typically they're not going to have children. And so, that's something that would, it would be one of our priorities is to look at something like that. And Tracy's been approached, I think, by several different...
So, it's like, you know, there's an area in Sunnyvale, like comprehensive, like large, that type of development. Are you talking about where it's already speculated at there? Or you're talking about a different areas?
So, that's where we need...
Other changes?
Yeah. That's what we kind of, the guidance.
That's where we need to put from council and what council wants to see. So, one of the main reasons this got brought up is because we're seeing a lot of it come before staff. And we talk to people all the time wanting to build a senior living component in Sunnyvale. But, what does that look like to council? Is that something that you even want? There's a little denser requirements when it comes to age-restricted communities. And I've kind of gone through here. There's obviously things, I put every definition you could possibly want. And, you know, there's apartments, there's independent living, and these are kind of more of the full-service community styles. You have the residential communities. You have senior living, like the Del Webb communities in Georgetown. You've got assisted living, memory care, consulting, care, retirement communities. So, what does that, what does that look like here in Sunnyvale? How, how do y'all see it? What areas would y'all want to focus on? Can that include townhomes? Can it only be single-family residential type in density levels? Just kind of getting a feel for what y'all thought.
Tracy, what's the comprehensive plan set right now? Do you have that, do you? Could we put some thought in to it, right, to get that vision back? Not that we should always stay there.
I know.
We have a starting point.
I know currently it has said that it would be...
That's kind of like what Brown is or something?
Senior living area would provide an option for those who are aging to stay in Sunnyvale to prevent the senior living area from straining the school's district. Council, town will work with the senior living developer in school district to adopt an ordinance to prevent residents from allowing grandchildren to use their address for school attendance purposes. The following are desired elements. A master plan for you, the HOA, to ensure consistency in design. Residential lots of a quarter acre to maintain a space deal. Recreation amenities, parks, trails, acres for people who are older and access to medical facilities, community maintenance, landscaping, anti-monotony, monotony. Monotony, whatever the word is, standards. Little home development size fifty to seventy-five acres. And...
Probably will end up being like that.
Be like a PC, right?
Yeah.
Plan development.
And I would think that you guys need to have some flexibility because somebody may bring you an idea that's in zone for SF, whatever SF3 is now or something like that or some other.
I'll even throw something out there. That land on Beltline, those retailers are going to want that front space.
I was going to mention, we kicked around that concept at, at last month's meeting of allowing some of the commercial developers who have property in the back of their development that doesn't have frontage to maybe use that to, to develop some smaller age-restricted areas in the back of their property and maximize the use of that. I know the, the density issue kicks in there. But, again, wouldn't impact schools, wouldn't impact traffic and would allow them to use some of that property. And you have good tax-paying citizens back there that would never become multifamily or anything like that. It, it would be a, a nice use of the property. However, you know, it...
I think this is a topic we've all kind of bounced around in the beginning. So, I won't speak for everybody here. But, I don't think anybody's really opposed to senior living. The question is, I think it was either, one of you two said, what does it look like?
Yes.
And one thing I don't think we could do is that I don't think we can pass an ordinance to super us, use our state law, which allows the grandparent rule to be in our schools. So, that's not to say that we're not going to have senior living, but I think we'd be remiss to say, oh, we're going to write an ordinance to say, you can't have that, state laws, you can't. So, we need to, we need to come to grips with that because that will impact the schools a little bit. Is it a lot? Yeah, who knows? And I think, I don't know how old you guys are, but when you hit fifty, I'm not looking at senior living yet. As a matter of fact, fifty-five, I'm not looking at senior living. So, in my mind, at fifty-five, what does that look like? And I think that's where the flexibility is. I'm not rating downgrade, so I'm thinking maybe seventy-five, thirty. I don't know. But, I think that's when, when people, you know, we've met with a couple of developers individually to talk about that. And when I look at it, I'm like, hmm, that doesn't strike. So, I don't think any of us have a really good plan for what that looks like. I'm okay with the flexibility. But, I think one thing that strikes me individually, not speaking for any of the other council, what strikes me a little bit awkward is that we have a whole bunch of small homes that senior people can't take care of. And then in ten years, it looks like what you don't want it to look like when you build it. So, that's, that's my wraparound. I don't know how we protect that.
So...
I know Brooks and Rich, I got somebody that does it.
Well, yeah. What I was going to mention is, you know, you've got a variety of senior living facilities. So, you start off at the very low level, government-funded, low-income. And there's a bunch of those around here, but there's none in Sunnyvale. So, there's, and they're all really nice facilities. I mean, if you go to one, you wouldn't realize it's low-income. But, the exterior is a hundred percent taken care of by the facilities. The seniors don't pay to take care of anything. And then you move up the spectrum. And on the farther end, and I have clients that live in them, mostly up north and out west, the way that they're set up is an HOA-type arrangement. And so, their HOA dues monthly are in the thousands of dollars. And then their home insurance ensures the inside of the house. So, it's a freestanding condominium. So, if it gets hailed on, the neighborhood puts a new roof on. Needs paint, they paint. They don't pluck a piece of grass in their yard. So, these are usually very fluid people that want a quality house with quality amenities. And when they want to go take a cruise and be gone for four months, they just lock their door and leave.
So, see, this word sound good, but my question is, what does it look like on paper? And I don't, I don't talk to anybody that's got a good concept of what that looks like.
So, that's where, you know, to me, I just, I agree with you. You can't, I don't think you can, you know, paint that picture, but just be open to it when the developers come and want to present it because most of these people don't want a quarter acre. And if you do, then you'll go build your own house somewhere instead of anything.
Tell you my opinion, I'm just going to give, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think the, it is part of the vision. It's part of the comprehensive plan. We need something, right?
Okay.
But, detail, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Details, where it is.
Yeah. We don't know what that looks like.
Obviously, we've got to go to the staff because we've got to be careful. But, the police, they, they have a service, right? If it's old enough, not fifty-five, it cannot be, right? The other thing is, I'm fifty-four. I said, talk about fifty-five.
What, what, what would...
So, what we can talk about is we, we are just, my problem is spoken, speaking details. Could you ever meet with council and PM, could you ever meet with a big developer on this interstate? Throw a commitment because you're not there. We just...
Right.
In general, we have offered the idea, we should know what the plan they bring up fits our...
I think, I agree. I agree with that.
I don't think it's, it's there. That's the vision of my speaking for the council or my, my... It's only there.
You know, having lived here as long as I have, a long time, I, I pretty much laid first stone. The, the perception that we had when we moved here in nineteen seventy-nine was Sunnyvale was going to be an all-of-the-place. And that term covers it, is a big umbrella when you talk about the level of living. And then we got into the lawsuits. And then we began to realize that just saying quality of life, well, you then begin to become very sensitive to exclusionary tactics, which is what that lawsuit was about. It's very hard to put into words what this picture looks like because it's real easy to get right back into a scenario again that puts us where we lose that quality that Sharon and I thought Sunnyvale would be and I believe continues to be. It's going to take a lot of hard work and management effort to do it. So, I don't think there is an answer or three answers. As Sadie said, we're going to meet with developers in a couple of days. You know, that's part of the reason why it's hard for us to zero in on this. But, I think in today's world, particularly from architectural perspective, when you look around Dallas and the surrounding cities and you see what's happening, and I'm not advocating necessarily for this, but if you look along any of the commuter lines that DART has and you see what's being built there, I'm not saying that's what I want, but I'm seeing things there that can bring the quality of life or the type of social quality individuals to our city, or to our town that we want, that we want to have. That, that's why it's hard to, it's why it's hard to hit the center of the dartboard, I think. And it's because there's, there's, it'll be climbing. It's just a difficult one to define.
So, tell you, in general, everything you guys have talked about is some great ideas, right? Just about what you're going to do. Short-term goals are great. If you have longer-term goals, be thinking of the strategic planning also, right? It's all short-term.
Yeah. Well, we have one last topic, downtown development.
It might be any place that's undesirable. There might be some places that are better than others. But, I don't know that there's any place that's reasonable that would be undesirable.
I tell you one place that I think is great, just kind of parallel along with that and that's already been brought up. The retailers want to face Beltline.
Yes.
But, the lots are so deep. But, particularly when you're talking about the southeast corner of Beltline, you're backing up to the Samuel property, New Hope, the New Hope. That actually provides the barrier that we try to build into all these HOAs and, or the planned residential overlays. the planned residential overlays, you know, we're talking a sixty-foot dead area that can't be built on and all that. That's a natural one that already exists and will never go away unless somebody figures out a way to break the Samuel doctrine, I call it the Samuel doctrine. But, you know, that's a perfect area because that kind of becomes a unique little island in and of itself behind the retail that would face Beltline and between, that area between that and Farm. And I know there was a presentation that was brought forward about a year, year and a half ago that showed a street of some type in there, and I don't remember what happened. I don't think that particular plan came all the way to council, but I did see the initial layouts and thought processes of it, and I'm thinking, okay, you know, there's some things that we might connect with there.
Yes, if you turn the page over, our last bullet is downtown development. And we put this at the end because this is part of 4B's vision as well as 4A. We really don't know what the downtown development looks like, but we would like for that development to be around here. I mean, of course, where the bank is and where Derek's development is going in, between like eighty and Trip on both sides of the road. I'm going to let some of the other 4A members talk a little bit about their vision for downtown.
Yeah, I think in the past, you know, Sunnyvale is a product of the melding of several small communities, and we never really got our identity as a downtown. I think New Hope once had a downtown and it got torn up by tornado on Beltline, but we sort of envisioned like a small town square with the amenities that go with that. And of course, that would require us to acquire property somewhere. And so we've kicked around some ideas, and we don't have any locked down one certain thing, but Derek's thing is going to, and the bank are going to further kick off, you know, kind of what our mindset is too. So because we ran into some opposition in the last land acquisition that we did, we'd like to preface what we do with, by saying we would, we, us and 4B, if I could speak for 4B, would love to come to the council and make a recommendation at some point to acquire some property, which is what we're going to need to do to come up with this downtown area footprint. Beyond that, or even if a developer came towards us and said, I would like to build downtown, you know, then we can embrace that and look at incentives there, but that's where we're going with it. And I think everybody in town would love to see a downtown Sunnyvale, some sort of another, so.
Well, that's going to be my thoughts again. We are new council, all council, it's all new council, part of it. It's not that anybody was against any other property, we have two property acquisitions, right? One on southeast of Beltline and Sir Collins, Perler Property and the Glacier Track. I think in both cases, perhaps, I think they are good guys, it cannot be all good. I don't want to get an endgame with it. That's probably the thing, right? You buy, then you see that, try to figure out. So I think if you wrap that big plan first, obviously, we can't buy every property, right? So got to get that property owners' inputs into what they wish, they, their desire, their goal, right? Combined with the vision of the 4B, 4A, and the council. At least for me, buying property is an option, but it just means an endgame. If you don't know how good you did, you don't know how to get out.
I think in this case, we would have an endgame. We would have a good idea about our.
Yeah, the southeast corner truly fell into our lap. I mean, that was not the ideal plan. It just fell into our lap, and you know, even though it wasn't as good a deal as we thought it was going to be, still turned out to be a good deal. And, you know, it spurred growth and finally some sales across the street, that's.
I think in council, where do you think I want to talk?
I love that idea of downtown, I'd like to, there's still some debate about Roundabout, but I'd like to make it all part of a holistic vision, right? From eighty, even to the Roundabout, you look at some of the towns, like I was in Rowlett yesterday, you see that downtown that's connected to that piece. I think that's awesome, and I think it'd be a wonderful, if we can develop something like that addition to the town, that's just my two cents, but I love that idea.
We talked about downtown Rockwall and how they've maintained their integrity there, and that would just be so cool to have Sunnyvale.
We bounced those items around amongst ourselves, and I think that we're all agree with that. Probably everybody at this table is, my question is, are we going to keep talking about this till next year? Are we going to do this and put a timeline on it so that it actually happens? And that's, that's really big for me, is we put timelines and make things happen versus sitting around talking about it. Probably wrong, but he was good, but.
He owns the property, controls the property.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we don't know what their plans.
Correct. Ultimately, you and 4B, 4A, and 4B are asking y'all support in, do you want to move forward with trying to make this happen? And if so, is it acquiring a property or trying to work with a developer and design something and let them acquire, and we support the development of it?
Maybe it's joint.
I'd say both. Both, go down both paths.
In the past, it's been kind of a three-way conversation. You're like, I think we agree, well, do we agree? Do we agree? And then nobody does anything, so.
We're talking about a long stretch also, right? You know, so from the Roundabout, will be the Roundabout to eighty, so maybe it'll be, you know, different pieces, but I've been favorably.
Various different property owners too, and you know, we don't know what their vision is for their land, so.
But that's the pursuit that has to take place in conjunction with that, I mean, if Collins is going to look like, what it's going to do, and that, and the impact of that.
We have that vision now, kind of, so when we start to design there, right?
We're starting to get there, but we're even talking what infrastructure is going to happen, as well as eighty, for example, we're talking about infrastructure changes. We didn't address it tonight about putting in sewer, but frankly, that's not top of mind right now until we see a little bit, nobody's asking for it, and let's see what's coming in with eighty, and that's our time to hopefully save some money and try to jump on.
And I know it was short, Miller's, I sent y'all an email, what, an hour before the meeting, but you brought up downtown Rowlett. In two thousand and five, they applied for grant. They paid, the city of Rowlett invested eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and got three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars paid for infrastructure improvements downtown there to allow what's now going vertical to be there. But that was twelve years ago that they actually got started. And I've got all the information on the different grant stuff and planning on doing that during the 4B stuff, but it's awesome. You know, there's lots of opportunities out there, but we have to work together, put together the plan, work with whoever the right person is on staff to do the grant applications because money's out there to help us maximize the dollars that we're accumulating that we can then multiply times four and get the, work with the property owners, get the infrastructure in place so that then they can profit off of going vertical.
Sounds like, that's, tell the family we're fearful, I won't speak for anybody here, right, and here, looking at professional expressions. So where do you go from here? Right? Say something, or a form we will start taking, or you're asking, what we go?
Do you envision like retail with lofts on top, or, because then you're talking about apartments, or are you just talking all retail, or, because in downtown Rowlett, they do now have apartments or high, I guess, not really high-rise.
That must be part of that, the detailed plan, right? What that looks like. If you go with, this is what I will do, that I'm going to force myself in the book, right? I think we'll kind of open, open mind, we'll be somebody with expertise in developing downtown maybe. Tracy, you said, right, we can spend thirty thousand dollars, some number of dollars to go have a consultant, if you don't own the property, why do you do? But if you go, I don't know, we should go buy the property first, because then we are.
What would our, yeah, what would our next?
How about if we bring you a presentation, a recommendation? Maybe with 4B, you have a joint meeting about that. I mean, our options are limited, so it's not rocket science, but it would have to be executive session material, so.
Has council met with the property owner on any vision?
No, that I know. Yeah, specifically the property behind us.
Is that one?
Drawing still laying back over there that they presented at some point of what a downtown.
You talk about that issue?
Yeah.
I don't know, they had a, ever, ever with that plan. I don't know, but again, I won't speak, I'm going to bring up Sean's name here, but Sean is not here, but I don't know what Sean, this is a few years back, and Sean went back and talked to them about their plans. I don't know they had a plan with that town. I mean, last, I don't remember for Sean's, on the side of Sean, they didn't have a plan. That doesn't mean they don't have a plan now, okay?
But I think, I think town council needs to meet with them for, 4A, 4B, it's involved, because if your plan or your idea or vision is not what the owners is, we're dead.
Good point, so I think we can always just be, every property ownership is part of the discussion.
Exactly.
Because we can force them, right? If they can buy, if they're spending a lot of money at their will, right? If they're part of the solution, perhaps we could have a, you know, we want them to benefit also, right?
What are we willing to incentivize as well? If at all, so we are a big player in this. If we decide we want to incentivize or do something different, then we can, I mean, control the way that destiny, or on the piece of property, I think that gives us more leverage too. I think that's why we should consider that as, as some of that as well. We can control that as well, and so I don't think we should be opposed or put us in a box. I'd love to see your thoughts and ideas on a presentation and see what that looks like.
You mentioned something a while ago about grant writing, and that's one thing that I think we have lacking in our town in every area, is we don't have a grant writer. As far as I know, I haven't seen any of that. I was at Mesquite, they hired a grant writer to go get the money, and we've got millions of dollars sitting out there that we could get. I don't know how we do that, whether it's a 4A, 4B council, or staff, but I'd like to see us all collectively find a way, get grant, free money is what it is, it's free money, federal money in our town, it helps offset whatever, nothing like free stuff, right? So I'm all in favor of that.
There are probably different ways that, so staff has done some grants just on their own, there's also been the possibility of hiring a consultant, which we've looked at before as well to put the grant together. We, you know, with Butterfly Gardens, we applied for a grant, we're fortunate that Ms. Anthony is a phenomenal grant writer in her spare time, and so she was able to put together that, so we kind of pieced together what that looks like.
That's, that's, that's meaningful, we didn't get a, anything.
Now, the scope of our project is smaller than they generally find, they are looking for like eight hundred acres, or something like that.
The, some of the property that in question has already been zoned, if you will, for
some sort of a town center overlay, so the owners of themselves are limited with respect to what they can do with that property under the, under the covenants of the code. Again, if we incentivize the property, and again, we can bring a recommendation to you guys, that may, quote unquote, get them off the fence.
End of the day, they are trying to be profitable, right? If the program makes their benefit and we benefit, everyone benefits, it's a support. Come, get to that, fine, isn't it? Can I ask a question to you?
Yes. I think we're all passionate about downtown.
I think so, I think that's, should be a high priority to get going, give her a learn.
I agree, that's what I would ask Tracy, what's our next step to move forward with that?
Is it going to go to another company? Is that it, Tracy?
Yes.
Also, I've got a question on that, actually. I actually heard several proposals of what the next step is, and I'm not actually clear on what the next step is. So I heard meet with the property owner about the vision, 4A, 4B meet to propose a vision to council, meet with a consultant to come up with a vision, and so I think this is where we actually get hung up a lot of times, is everybody has great ideas, and we don't come to an actual agreement on what the next step is. So we all leave the table and we scatter, and then six months later, we're all confused as to what the next step is. So maybe we can actually agree on what the next step is.
So 4A, 4B meets and we discuss.
And I would like to add to that, that 4A and 4B, while we might have a vision, we may need, are we talking about consulting, or getting a consultant involved in that one, or just us coming up with our vision?
I think we're looking at acquiring or establishing a footprint for a town, downtown square, and that footprint can be anywhere from twenty acres to forty acres or whatever, I don't know how much we need necessarily.
But I guess we have the experience to come up with an actual vision and plan.
Sure.
Tracy.
I mean, personally, I would, so in talking with the people that, several of the owners that own the property in our downtown, we have a downtown overlay district, and if you don't know where it is, it's this little pinky area right here, and then Town Hall, Attorney Bank, Derek's property, this is considered our town center overlay district. So I've talked with a few property owners over here, and some of them do have visions on what they want downtown to look like, or what their thoughts are. So I think that if everybody's in agreeance that that's what we need to do, then the next step would be getting together some people, whether that be all the property owners, some of 4A, some of 4B, staff definitely, and finding out what their vision is, and everybody kind of coming up with a plan before, kind of seeing what the property owners are looking at and what their thoughts are.
Did they mention any members, because I'm all for incentives, and I know we got, we got that going, but at the end of the day, we're talking about big pieces of very, very valuable property, that those owners know how valuable it is. So if it's priced out of our, comfort level, comfort level or even just feasibility, do we want to waste a whole lot of time? You know, in other words, is this forty million dollars, is this twenty-five million dollars? Because it very well could be a sizable amount of reach.
And we spend all our money on the property and we have nothing left to do anything with it.
Well, that's, if somebody gets purchased, I mean, that's if somebody gets purchased, and I for one would be on the fence, or on the side of the fence of saying, let somebody develop that, but, I mean, I, Paul knows his stuff, and I have respect him for that. I'm a little bit over here of, let's work with a developer to develop that, and let's see the interest first, if there's interest to going to the next step, of then seeing what that might look like, but it doesn't, I guess what I'm saying, it doesn't have to be a purchase. I don't think it does.
Right, we're talking about two paths, right? Purchasing it, or maybe just working with the owners and seeing.
But they're asking for a vision, they're not asking for.
But right now, it's just vision, and those, the endgame would be the same for both those, you know, what we kind of envisioned.
I would think we might need to get the vision of the property owners.
I think so. So Paul, I'm hoping that when you guys get together with the 4B, you can, right, a scale could, right? One of the steps you need to take right down to the details, Ms. Bradford points, when you come to the details, I'm pretty sure you have a consultant, and all, you have enough time, more resources, and experience, but that's probably two or three steps down the road, I think initially is the basic, right? That's what we're thinking about.
Yes.
So 4A and 4B will get together and start talking? Do we want to set a timeline?
Next.
Next Friday?
With the contract.
So we'll add the timeline within our strategic plan.
Excellent.
After this meeting, so the goal is that after this meeting, we can finalize our strategic plan, it'll go back finalized in January to both boards, and then once both boards approve it, it'll come to council for final approval, just to get y'all's buy-in and sign off on, yes, move forward.
It's a February, January?
Probably February to council.
Well, it's close enough, we're not meeting.
Yeah, we just have one more meeting between the boards, so the end, between now and the end of the year. And I would also like to propose that we work in, check in with council along the way, so we don't spend six months to a year coming up with this beautiful plan that is nothing what council.
Sorry, again, my thought is, anytime you guys want to meet, I think we can either opt to, once.
I think it's a high priority, I think maybe we push it faster.
Push what? The strategic plan?
Just meeting and talking about it.
Look, we only have one meeting between now and the end of the year, and I could add in another.
Welcome.
Well, I think the first step is just to find a time where 4A and 4B can get together, and then I'll give a chance, we'll find a fallout from there. Should we add in a 4A, 4B meeting this week?
In December. You think we could do that? I mean, we could do that in December?
Do you want to meet in December?
So I think we could.
We can talk about it at our next meetings, or I'll send y'all an email.
Yeah, we could maybe have one in December. But I, but I still think we need to engage all the property owners. I know we've only talked to a few because I don't know, I don't know what their vision is, and maybe their vision is the same as ours.
I think there's a time for that.
Well, but is that not, because we don't know what the property owners are already doing. So my thought is, because I've talked to some of them, I think that some of them are going down a path already, and I think that we need to figure out what that path is. And we're already taking steps that they're already taking, that we're just double dipping into what everybody's doing, opposed to kind of figuring out and working together, so.
What your step doesn't, it's not theirs.
Sure.
What your step doesn't, it's not theirs.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm afraid of.
We negotiate.
And we buy.
So anyway, so come back to that plan, hopefully.
Well, we each have another board meeting in November, each board, but maybe we can do a joint meeting in December. We wouldn't have anything for council till next year, but maybe we can have another. And that's why we put that at the end, because we knew that 4B wanted to talk about that as well, so. And that's why we put that at the end, because we knew that, that four B wanted to talk about that as well, so.
Uh, just one more thing. So with the expansion of Collins, four B has talked about the idea of these little holes going down the medians, possibility.
Have you heard of four B now, or you've turned to four A?
No, that's under beautification, which was on four A.
Okay.
Kind of still parking with it.
Well, it's the downtown development, it's part of the downtown development conversation on if we want our, with the expansion of Collins, we have the opportunity to be able to put some of these light holes, decorative light holes in the medians. So the, before it goes, before it goes out to, to bid, just figuring out what y'all would like to see, and then that way we can figure out, because what Lila means is just kind of a design that y'all would like to see, and then we can figure out how many feet apart, so that that can go into the bidding process. So it's been, to my knowledge, this has not been discussed in the median as of yet, but just being able, because the idea came about.
And the median, right out here.
Adding banners to it during the holidays, adding some.
So just put a sign around the median and create the four lines?
Well, then, the combination of, you know, working in with the master plan, the branding, so that when you enter from eighty, that you have kind of the old town feel with whatever the style hole is that's picked, preferably to go all the way past the schools. And then we wanted to finance electrical to potentially every other one, because they gave us a different price on if we could have, yeah, for holiday decorations and stuff that you could line up. So holes themselves for one price, and then you had flags, if you have electricals.
Yeah, also in coordination with the schools.
Do we have anybody encore that can help us out there?
Right there.
We've talked, we've talked about this, so. On our, our decorative lighting, the tallest decorative lighting we have is sixteen foot, so it depends on how high you want it to be. And then we won't allow electrical outlets. So if you want anything lit up, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be on an encore street light.
It wouldn't be what?
You could do as much as much as your power down there.
We don't allow outlets on our facilities.
So I thought was every three or four or five, whatever it is, would be one that we would buy, that would have the power on.
When they're ready to talk about that plan, I'm here to help.
Yeah.
Figure out a way to do that.
Does encore have a grant, we can, can we say the median?
No, unfortunately, we do not.
Some are on the side, some are in the median, it just depends on whatever.
Council, any thoughts on decorative lighting?
I like it.
I like this.
Any thoughts on it?
I'm good with either one.
Okay, sounds like it's.
I'm in favor of lights.
Tracy?
Yeah. The concept.
Sounds up for illumination.
Because, you know, that's going to have to, like she said, be included in the lighting plan, so.
Let you come back to that, I want to, I want to take, pick the lights, because we're, we're four B to go.
What, what's the recent status on the lighting, so we can take time wise?
So, Charles, unless you want to talk, we have a job.
You can go ahead.
Four B, okay, so, you know, I think we finished the land acquisitions, correct? Oh, we, there's one more.
I don't, one more.
Okay, so we are there, meanwhile, staff is moving along. Let me, we step back. They laid out a project schedule, I want to say twenty, twenty August or May?
April of twenty twenty for project completion.
So it's going to be the August, April of twenty twenty, that's going to be the initial operating capital, the IOC. So you go backwards, the steps are, that acquisition, they are basically done. Then they are in the process of utility relocations, and December they will prepare a code to, after, to, after, to send the, the course of courts out. The January, I think, January is the year they're planning a construction building, and that's the schedule with that. So I'm just going to give you.
So August of twenty twenty should start?
April twenty twenty is when it's going to be finished.
Which finished, August should be April twenty twenty.
April of twenty twenty.
Will be done in April?
When will construction start?
Sometime next spring.
April twenty nineteen. Okay.
And that's from.
I'm really worried.
Isn't it around that same time that Texod has agreed, or whoever the powers that be, that look forward to the South Collins construction?
Obviously, I'm a semester, but I thought at some point I've done. It's always relative, you know, to do it or not, right? That Texod has finished acquisition of every property except Mike Anderson's property. So we walked with Mike Anderson, he got the papers, then we were told, oh, you're being started, we're waiting for that to be done. So now they are in the process of acquiring twenty or so properties. So it's not the schedule.
That it once was.
I believe, I, I won't say, yeah, I was taking it for serious. I won't blame somebody to say, no, I believe it was. So, we got the funding, we got the design.
Yes.
The, the acquisition, obviously, everything is, utility relocations and the construction. So big dollar schedule for that. Is the four A going to hang around, or four is done? I'm going to ask you, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's up, it's up to the board what they want to do.
Okay, great. I just want to, because I forget, appreciate everyone, okay, now this is a warranty work, because a lot of time, you're passionate about the town. We appreciate it, because things council can do to support you, please let us know. The new member, Jane, can you welcome you? What's your, I can know if you are.
Well, you guys are getting paid the same as we are, right?
Ryan is going to ask the twenty plus my family.
All right, we're getting bonuses.
And I also want to welcome, I also want to welcome Sarah Bradford, Torres, and Anderson. And also.
And council member.
All right, so I, I might need to close the four A portion unless you all want to stay. I was going to stay, so I don't know what the rest of you want to do.
Are you planning to leave, that's why you want to close it?
I don't know. What do you guys want to do? Well, yeah, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and. Well, yeah, we'll close the four A portion of the meeting at seven twenty. I may stay a little bit.
You sure? We're going to be here for a while.
I didn't say I was going to stay for the whole thing, I'm just going to, we'll see.
All right.
Yes.
Is that what you want to do?
Were we, were we not allowed to speak here?
You weren't supposed to speak.
Because now they still have a corner.
What about voting?
No, we don't.
Yeah, we still don't, okay, look at, see that. I was just going to listen for a little bit, I don't think it's.
If anyone's going to leave, we still appreciate you.
Just.
All right, we'll go to the four B portion with our top priorities. Number one, parks, long and short term vision. We'll move on to the first one, which is Vineyard Park, lighting, overall field issues. Well, we recently walked into Vineyard Park, and we found out there's a lot of issues with Vineyard Park still. So since Ryan's the money man, we'll just get the money from him. So some of the issues are, the grading, what that we assume, as four B assumed was done on Vineyard Park, it was, actually, it wasn't done properly. So the two fields that are out, well, basically, two fields that are there that kind of slope into the middle of it, which means that half of each field is almost useless. Water sits on, water sits in the middle of it. So that's an issue.
They paid quite a bit for that, too.
Yeah, we did.
So we have consulted on the ground shift?
This was their design, this was what the.
Is there a French drain in there? When was this graded?
This was a while back.
Couple years.
Couple years, right.
A couple, or?
I would say three to four.
We hired somebody, but it was worked through.
Michael Doughty was involved, Sarissa was involved.
Yeah, Michael Doughty actually met us out there, but that, that is a major issue. So there is going to be some grading that's going, filter and grading will have to, it'll have to be shut down, basically.
And resawing and CD and all that stuff?
Yeah, probably. Not the whole thing, but, I mean, we're going to have to do some. Yes. Because right now, they can only, the way it's situated, they, they're, they're splitting the fields.
So Mike, I, I understand that, that's your plan to do it, do you have the funding for that? What is, what's your statement?
We're letting town council know, but that's going to be a project that's coming up very soon.
That's new information, so we don't have.
We haven't got any bed dream.
That with lights.
What's that?
So now our lighting, this will be on top of our lighting plan as well.
Exactly.
So, yeah, just back up a little bit. So whenever we brought the lighting before council, for, for school and stuff, and the question became, do, is that adequate lighting? Maybe we need some more holes, we need some more, whatever. So we met with, and probably, for those that don't know, and most of four B does not, this is Burton Barr, he's our new parks director. So he's come along to hear these conversations, and him and I have had extensive conversations over the last few weeks. So we went out to Vineyard Park, Burton, myself, Mr. Girodano, we met with Michael Doughty, and we also had Park Electric out there, and started going over the field. And that was when we really started looking at the flooding that was going on in the field.
What's Mike's role?
So he's what Sarissa said, he handles the soccer portion, that's kind of split on.
He's a soccer team.
And so he's been on those fields since the very beginning. So when he came out and he told us how they play, what they do, what they're looking at, how much of the fields can actually be utilized, because when it rains, maybe, I don't know, I would say about seventy percent of the field is usable. The other thirty percent is in water and they can't really use it. So then you get into even further issues on, we don't have nets, we don't have anything out there, so when the soccer balls go over the trails, they're getting into poison ivy, and there's just all kinds of things that we weren't really aware of that were going on at the field. So now that we've had those conversations, we ended up talking about lights as well, believe it or not, but we found out a lot about the fields and how they need to be brought up to be able to play. Because right now, they're playing, don't poke me on my directions, but they're playing east and west, and there could be a potential that they play north and south, and so that they're not playing all one direction the entire time running out the field. So that if they can turn, then we'll get better use out of the field. And that can't happen right now based on the way the water is draining. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to move forward with potentially getting the lights. I'm still waiting, the guy, my contact from Park Electric, he went out of town, so he's been out of town all last week, so he can get back with me this week on the lights. What's going to happen with that is, we need taller lights in order to make the fields adequately lit up. Our UDO right now states that the tallest we can go up is thirty feet. In order to light the field, they said most lights for ball fields are sixty feet tall. I've asked them what the possibility of meeting in the middle and maybe doing something at forty-five feet, what that would look like, or what that would cost. The other idea was, we are lighting that can be acceptable in the UDO, it does not allow for, it allows for the light to go straight down as opposed to being able to go out a little bit. So if we can allow for lights that go out a little bit, that would also accommodate the height of the pole. We may not need it necessarily so high if we can get that light out a little bit further. So those are things we're looking at, where we'll come back to with another plan based on what Park Electric comes back with on the bid. We can move forward with the lights and have the lights further along, further, closer to the trail line, which still meets the setback requirement that's required in the UDO. But as far, as close as we can get to the trails, then we can still work on the fields at a later time, whenever we can come together with those price quotes and everything else to get the deals added.
So Tracy, I know we had at least one of the neighbors send me an email, I don't know if it's the neighbor's council number or not, in support of.
All the residents, all the residents there are in support of lights on the field. So that's, that is one of the best things we've got going for that location, and all of them are very supportive of the lights going up there.
Total lights?
Yes, any lights, they don't care if it weeds over, it's, they're completely fine with it.
Nobody cut off by, you know.
Nine, nine thirty.
Nine, nine eight, nine P M or something.
Yeah, so it's not that they'll be on very late, we just need to be able to accommodate our fields. And anything moving forward, any more ball fields or anything else that we talk about, we're going to have to go higher than thirty feet. So we need to look at that in the UDO. So that's kind of where we're at with Vineyard Park. We'd like to move forward with the lighting, as soon as I get that, I'll bring that back, but then we're also working on quotes and stuff to be able to fix the fields and get those moving forward as well. So that'll be something that'll be brought back.
I think just an important side note, just from a community perspective, a resource perspective, is that this is practice fields for a lot of kids. So it does not have to be, we, we want to do the best we possibly can for the kids, but they're not going to be playing games there, we're not hosting tournaments there.
So what's the difference, the surface, you mean, the quarantine surface?
I'm just, I guess, my whole point there is just that it doesn't have to be a Mercedes, you know, we.
So now, what is the difference in Mercedes versus what you want?
Um, my guess is going to be just expense, so it probably a different, completely different kind of grass.
Okay, the surface.
Terrain, the surface, yeah.
But it's not only inside the trail, that place is, strangely, it's got a moat that goes around it, you got to cross it to get into the field, and then it's got a lake in the middle. So if you go out there and you're not doused with deep, you're going to walk home covered in mosquito bite. So it's, it's the maintenance of the entire park area, not just what.
So why don't we just pay for putting beet in the moat? Why don't we just pay for putting beet in the moat?
Yeah, well, you should, but, so, yeah, it's, a lot needs to be done out there other than just the lights and then the interior.
And Eric's right, we have talked about, there, there's got to be a drainage plan along the exterior, so you have the trails inside, we talked about with the exterior. All it does is drain off, and then the water just sits right next to the fence line on.
I think a drainage study coming up in six months.
And so it does, the kids are getting eaten alive by mosquitoes right now.
And the parents that choose to get out of their cars.
Yeah.
Well, you know, based on what council noted this last time, I mean, we were willing to throw in more money because we felt I could need a little light. I don't think, and again, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think anybody, from the discussions that were had that particular night, go for it, guys. I, I don't think any of us are going to hold back and say, no, I, I think that's, that's a good thing, because it's something that, you know, when you have the residents, with probably the number one thing that typically gets complained about when it comes to ball fields, and they're going, or I have a problem with it, I think it's a great place for, particularly since you've got the business community on the other side to the west, it's an excellent location. The only thing about that location is it's flat. And that's where the drainage issue comes in, and that's why you've got that drainage issue. And we just need to be careful when we go in and bring dirt in to do what we're trying to do there, even though you've got Luton's property to the north, we just don't want to start sporing water to go to places that, with unintended consequences.
Well, the advantage of this piece of property is there's three sewer drains that we can tap into.
Where's water drained?
And they're on three corners.
Good.
And they're, and they're all on the outside of that sidewalk. So if we can tap into that, have everything drained to those sewer drains, we won't have a water issue.
Awesome, awesome.
And just from a budget perspective, we do, we did build five thousand dollars in the budget for just annual maintenance to cover, that would probably help cover some of the weed spray issues and some, some of those, maybe some of them.
That is, that's for all parts, I'm assuming, or just that?
Um, that specific part. We actually allocated a certain amount for each part or general annual maintenance.
Do you spend that much money, roughly?
We, I would have to go back and look at last year's numbers. We actually took that number down, because last year was the first year that we actually started allocating on a per-part basis. But that amount is not going to come to the lights, and it's not going to come to the grading and a lot of that heavy work. But I'm just saying that we can allocate some of the work that needs to be done into that annual maintenance.
Non-recurring, non-recurring debt projects, but one time.
Right, there'll be some annual maintenance stuff, and then there'll be, you know, the, the one-time project stuff that we, and we have a separate budget for just parks as well. So it'll all be covered under our existing budget, so, but we'll just be bringing in projects to, for your.
Sounds great.
Any questions on Vineyard? All right, move on to the next one, Johnson Park. Currently has a baseball field and a trail. Johnson Park has been, you know, ongoing of issues for a long time, as we all know. So we're really not sure with the situation, where it sits with the school. And, I mean, we're, we're maintaining it as of right now, but other than that, we're not sure if we're going to pursue anything other than what we already do.
So if you could get, let's say you could find this guy, that could become your property, what would be your vision for it?
Well, we've already had a map of where we could add two more baseball fields. Well, we've already had a map of where we could add two more baseball fields and.
We had, yeah, we had a bid done a couple of years ago to actually repair the trail system because it's pretty messed up, but then we kind of stopped it all.
Total sixteen acres, you would add.
Couple of ball fields and property and parking.
I think we were looking at a little playground area as well.
As well, but, I mean.
From a, from a soccer standpoint, it's barely used for soccer, there's a few people that go out there, but from a baseball standpoint, you could put in basically the same size. It's there, that would accommodate up to through, you know, what, fifth grade, I guess, and below.
Yeah, it would be, it would be for smaller kids.
And that's where the largest demand is right now.
I have a feeling that with the new turf going in at the baseball stadium with the high school, they guard, it's still, Coach Arden will still be generous and allow.
Yeah.
Use that, but it's gonna be, you know, just perspective real quick on Cerisa, I just got the basketball numbers. So when we started Cerisa five years, six years ago, we had sixty, eighty basketball players, we just had three hundred and sixty signed up from just basketball. That's K through six.
What's this percentage split between Sunnyvale kids and kids from other, that's all?
Cerisa's all ninety ten, so it's ninety percent Sunnyvale, ten percent other, but some, they don't have to do other.
Right.
Some do, but honestly, that's mainly football.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just wondering what.
Yeah, it's, all the, it's in the bylaws, it's ninety.
I'm glad it's ninety ten rather than fifty fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coaching several teams, it's all Sunnyvale.
And it depends on the sport, how, what level of select it is. So basketball is open to everybody and there's multiple levels from kid that's never touched a basketball to top notch kids for their end group in D F W. Versus baseball, baseball is an exclusive organization and they kick people out, so if you're not in the top team, you don't play, you gotta go play mosquitoes.
You gotta play mosquitoes.
Cause soccer is a much more inclusive as well, so soccer has a group that decided to go select and they've gone outside of Cerisa, so Cerisa's now the inclusive group for soccer.
That's good.
So it just kind of depends on what the sport is, what each age group's experience is gonna be with.
Well, and it's good when you have enough kids to fill the, to fill that ninety percent.
Right.
And or enough kids that you can put together teams that are in the, every day so to speak, and let those select teams go somewhere else or they could be from Sunnyvale.
Correct, correct, correct. And then with baseball, baseball's involved, and that's where the younger kids, is where there's the highest demand at present, cause as you, you know, I'm learning, as your kid gets a little bit older, for the most part, they're gonna end up going select unless they're gonna play in a municipal league. And then it depends on the coach within Cerisa, which direction they wanna go.
And it depends on the skill level, there's whether or not he's gonna get to go.
But there's not enough, there's not enough fields at all in Sunnyvale to meet the needs of those.
The average.
True, well, those that choose to play in Cerisa, there's not enough.
So if, if we could get Johnson Park, probably do baseball diamonds, add two more baseball diamonds?
Yeah.
So you're gonna run into the same thing, are we gonna be able to put lights up there?
Yep.
How much of that is gonna have to be taken up by parking? And so, I mean, there's gonna be things that come into play that'll need to be discussed if that opportunity were to ever present itself.
Yeah, Austin leverage should come up.
Oh, yeah.
You have to be careful about how the light goes, right? The bleeding off.
Lights would be less of an issue.
Well, there's a whole street in between.
That's right.
But baseball's primarily, the kids are pretty, having lighting is not as big an issue for baseball as it is for soccer.
Because we're a nighttime game.
Right. Yeah, or, you know, it's light until like thirty, which is baseball suit.
Yeah, oh, I see, actually, actually, okay. So trace has a solution, right there.
The other was the restrooms, the, the, there's a, for the party right now?
Yeah.
For the media or?
For jobs.
Jobs.
Well, no, Vineyard, yeah, is there plans, aren't there plans to build a restroom in Vineyard too?
Where, where though?
Not in our strategic plan.
Um, Vineyard.
Vineyard, Jobson, or both?
Both.
For Johnson, do we, would we wanna build something?
We'll build our station restroom.
We've already. You can go to the library if the library's open.
The library too, the library doesn't like.
Correct.
But if you clear the line, you can, that would be more right.
Take your cleats off and you can go inside.
Those things are expensive, I don't know how you.
Very expensive.
A bathroom is extremely expensive to add.
Yeah, because they couldn't pour the bodies and nobody.
So from a budget standpoint, at one point, we had some money set aside in our budget back when we were considering purchasing Johnson Park. We had that rolling in our budget for like three or four years and then we were pretty much told to forget that, so.
So let's just take one example.
Yes, we kept that out.
Do you think you could have a restroom or not?
Oh, restroom.
Vineyard?
I don't, in my opinion, it's probably not. I mean, we could, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundreds, right?
Yeah.
Hundreds, like three hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Six hundred.
Four hundred?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's high.
And that would've been on subject too.
I could offer two singles and a party.
Or a silver line over.
Yeah.
If they got, that's a good value.
I mean, so, so the question then comes, are you willing, or are we willing to spend that kind of money?
For a temporary or lower class level park?
Exactly.
I think we just need to keep some bushes around, not chop down all the bushes.
There's poison ivy, they got two things in one stuff.
They're really, you could buy one of those.
All right, trade, now it's, now it's that movie.
I was the idea we would have restrooms and all.
Would the town allow that?
Could be added on to the outside.
They're using porta potters.
I know you are, come on.
There is, and the little girls complaining.
Especially if you have three.
I don't know if it's gonna be fifty.
And there's more ball fields and younger kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Michael said, we have to stay out of it.
What?
He said, we have to, he said, we have to work on it. The boys, if they need to, they can.
More trees, that's.
Yeah, there's poison ivy for it.
You got a corner, you little head.
That's why they want the lights.
So Michael, so I think what I'm hearing is if Johnson Park comes around, we'll just keep it that way. Really have a plan, if you think there will be a plan from Forbes to go do something about it?
Uh, we could, yes. But, I mean, Johnson's just been kind of lowered on our.
Fair enough, we don't have it, so that's not a complaint.
Like, why waste time on it until we know?
Okay, and we have to talk about that?
No.
Okay, that's there.
All right, Town Center Park, pavilions, tennis, basketball courts, trails, exercise machines, playgrounds, covered benches. Uh, we were looking at actually redoing, well, we redid the basketball courts, didn't we finish the covering on that or?
The striping just got done, the tennis courts just got resurfaced, they even finished. So tennis courts have been finished today, they also have pickleball out there now if you want to play pickleball. Um, and.
What's the pickle? Pickle, pickleball digs up like half, you can split like a tennis court, just split it in half and play this game called pickleball. It's like a kind of racket.
It's mostly seniors, so it'll really appeal to the seniors then.
It's not, it is not, it is not senior.
Can you put that actually at fifty five year age?
I met with somebody in, in Forty about two months ago, and pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports in the U S right now. It has nothing to do with age, they're having kids six years up playing this.
The kids are asking, actually put one in at the school that can use during recess.
Wow. And they're, I mean, it's, it's growing and you can use a tennis court to do the same event, so anyway, that's.
So you're, you're what you're trying to say, is what, is this item, just a bend in that, we just appear with the block, is that?
Yes.
That's more about?
We had talked about, you know, looking at expanding the bathroom as well, but there's the cost again.
Okay.
Um, because there's, we've had some complaints about the bathroom situation there, I'm sure you probably have.
Especially when Sunny Fest or we have any beds that go on down there, I mean, there's only one stall in the women's restroom, so, I mean, you have. Okay, I didn't know about the mints, but I know there is only one stall in the women's, and so it becomes an issue and, uh, so we've talked about putting.
You don't get much for a hundred thousand dollars.
No, the last quote we got to kind of do the same thing was a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, but all that goes back to, I mean, it's because we require the stone on there. Uh, it adds a little bit more cost to the restrooms, so.
Well, let's pull out Sunny Fest, and I'm not saying what this potential answer would be, would be wrong, but if you pull out Sunny Fest, are we getting a lot of complaints from citizens that there is only one stall and even one of the bathrooms? Cause Sunny Fest is rectified by bringing in porta potters.
Right.
So, you know, for that one event a year, I don't wanna have to spend three hundred thousand dollars if a hundred thousand dollars is what it takes, cause it'll end up being three. Are we getting a lot of complaints? I, I, I've never heard of any during normal three hundred sixty-five or three hundred sixty-four if you wanted to save it, save us as one of those days. Are we getting a lot of complaints that the single hallway, low sides is a problem?
So the only ones I've heard of are when something happens and it's a weekend and kids decide they're gonna go shove some mulch in something or flush some of the pots out of.
Which is vandalism, which is a totally different thing than needing to go to a bathroom.
Right, but it boils down to we have only one bathroom for somebody to go into and if something happens, whether it be not vandalism and something happens, then we.
The mulch both of them.
Don't have a restroom. Um, so it's.
Yeah, rather than spend the money, if we were gonna spend money on restrooms, then one or the other part.
Makes sense to me.
Just thoughts.
What is exercise machines?
I mean, I know what they are.
You know what they are?
I know what they are.
I've heard about it.
Come on, Larry, you've never used one before?
Have you been to Town Center Park?
Town Center Park and Samuel, yeah, across the street from him, those stations, they're like every fifteen feet where they have them. And there's armed things, there's stood up station, bench press, quad stuff.
You better drive, you better drive this way.
And they get.
I just wanna know what they were.
They get used pretty frequently, it's used times a day.
Have they held up well over the time that they've been there?
They've been all really good.
And they've been in there, what, fifteen years?
No.
Oh, and I've lived in Sunny Fest.
It does, it'd be along the way, just for somebody as well.
Samuel is older.
I always wonder how well it held up to the vandalism, to the people using it, to the weather, the.
They look good, they look almost new really.
If it's, that, that's cool. And that's the one thing I wanna be sure before I invest a whole lot more money as to how well they're holding up.
I don't think we're talking about having any new ones that you have.
No.
So regarding the path that goes back into the woods, um, is there any, are any plans, you know, cut back some of the foliage and or put like call centers or anything, I think, um.
I've heard about some.
Evans was talking about maybe trying to do some, some.
We brought it up, but we haven't yet had our.
Call boxes or something like that.
Meeting yet with the new parks manager, but, you know, one of the things we've talked about multiple times is raising the canopy, cause you get near the woods and it's, you know, you can't, you don't know what's three feet past you in the woods, you know.
It just needs to be pushed back.
Right, you need to clear it for us, raise the canopy.
Had to hold that, not two months ago.
What's that?
DSO chased a guy into the woods over there not too long.
Oh, really?
This is about two months ago, helicopters flying, you know, they thought it was somebody who was camping out in there, so, yeah, raising that umbrella would, would maybe help.
The other thing to think about back in there is that from a law enforcement standpoint, if somebody were to encounter something back there, there's no way to identify where you are, so there may be something to think about.
Markers or?
Like, this is J two, place three or something like that.
We had talked about, and I.
Whatever.
I agree. Eventually.
Way back in there, in the woods.
When we moved to the trail system, we planned on putting in mile markers and stuff, but you could do that, it's on the map, but when we talked about doing it on the ground, it became hard because it depends on.
Yeah.
If you do this, you know, yeah, yeah, cause it's.
And that people can do it on their phone.
I'm just saying, I specifically heard it from a sheriff that.
But correct, I agree with you, and we had, we were thinking, I was thinking about it, as measurements as opposed to just.
Some marker.
Or some, some generic marker that you can then give.
When you say Johnson Park, which Johnson Park? Or, I mean, where are?
Me Townsend, right.
That's the problem.
Honestly, I think, I think the call boxes are a great idea, but in our concrete jungle that we live in, going back there is really nice to actually get away from stuff. So having call boxes very close so that people can, and that are labeled, so people can know at least where they're at. Uh, but raising the canopy and cutting back too far, you're, you're gonna end up with what you have in open field basically, so, there needs to be a balance.
I'm saying like five, right, like five, five feet, five feet, just.
Somebody can't jump out.
Underbrush, underbrush, right.
Right.
But even like, even in the open area where you go and there's a barbecue pit on the west side, nobody's gonna go over there and use that. The trees are all the way over on the edge of the.
Right, it's touch, it's like touch.
It's like, by the end of the streets, there's a nice picnic table and a barbecue, but the grass is five feet, how to get to it. I mean, it's just like that kind of, there's no path to, I mean, it's a great idea, but you talk about functionality.
Is the new member of our town staff taking notes?
Yes, diligently.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure he does.
Almost three pages.
I haven't even met him yet.
I know, right?
That's more than I might even need.
Just some of your minutes.
He's got some job in the next year.
I do like the new lighting, LED lighting, that's a big difference out there.
So you make a decision on the?
And yeah, the conversion to LEDs out there, it's a lot brighter, so it's.
So Michael, you asking for an decision or what are you looking for? The sample, five dollar? It's more of an update.
No, Town Center.
Town Center? Okay. Oh, okay.
It's a Town Center.
Yeah. And we also updated the surveillance.
That's right.
Out there at Town Center.
Okay.
Which, yeah, we had to replace a bunch.
So, so wouldn't the biggest need be out there is more, really?
Well, I was gonna just say that, yeah. We were looking at maybe installing some more smaller buildings with the benches underneath there, covered buildings to add, because some of them, you know, depends on the weekend, but some of them are all used. And then if you have the.
Well, if they're big, they're taken.
Yeah.
It usually is.
Yeah.
And there's not many small ones for other families to use.
Yeah.
You could add some more of those, you know, they're probably thirty thousand too.
Those shouldn't actually be much, probably twenty, thirty.
Everything's either thirty thousand or a thousand.
So, one thing, is it possible to run the water more, cause this gets pretty stagnant, seems like, uh.
Yeah, we.
Is there a fountain or something that we can run there?
There is a fountain that, are you talking about in the pond?
Well, there's two things, there's a fountain and then there's the waterfall. You can turn on the lake to where the two lakes circulate, but they, for whatever reason, and maybe our new parks gentleman can explain it to us, but our old parks guy said that I just run it once a year when there's people out there for the Sunny Fest and we don't run it any other time. Never made sense to me. And then you had the fountain.
It's where it goes down.
Got, got plugged up, but now I know it costs electricity to run it, cause it's like running a large swimming pool, cause it.
You put on timer, huh?
So we used to run it starting at like four until.
And then there's a fountain that got all plugged up with fishing line and then they had to replace it.
We used to run it from like four P M to eight or nine P M, right?
Makes sense.
We used to, or we did?
Used to.
I don't know what we currently do. At one time, we were running it from four P M to nine P M. Don't get me to test the barn.
Yeah, it, it, it just broke and we just got replaced, both the motors and the fountain had to be replaced.
We used to stock the thing with fish and everything.
Yeah.
We did, not too long, there's stock it.
Still.
Yeah, it's pretty overgrown.
Will they survive?
And the lily pads get taken care of and.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, they spray those and to get rid of.
Well, Judson's and the ponds on trip right now, the pond down there, which I haven't been to, it should be pretty full of water. Oh, it's cool. That is a trip, pretty full.
Well, one question that comes up sometimes on surveys is splash pad more. And so I thought I would just throw that out there because.
But like, what is, so, it's kind of like that.
So like a, um.
Forty's down there now, the water.
It shoots up the water.
Yeah, it makes a soft surface and water.
Space foundation is these tables that shoots up the water and it would be like on some type of recycled water thing. We actually were considering it a few years ago, then we had like this major drought and water restrictions and blah, blah, blah. It's not something we recently talked about, but since we're talking about Town Center Park, I just thought I would just toss it out there.
Recirculate the water, so you.
Well, it's corn in there.
It's corn in there.
No. You said pond.
You could.
What was that I was saying?
Just turn the pump on, just get going.
It's getting louder.
So that's been an item that has come up on surveys because of the population of the younger children in our town, it seems to keep coming up. However, it has not been of interest.
So is that just something that you are concerned of that, or what?
We, we did consider it at one point, we didn't get very far in the process and it was a long time.
Are you planning to bring that back for consideration?
I'm just mentioning it now because we've talked about it before.
And I have the capacity to add more stuff, because every time I'm at that park, I mean, it is packed.
Well, I guess that, a question I would have there is what about all the green? Well, I guess that, the question I would have there is what about all the green space on the front side, is that off limits?
Well, that's where we're looking at the splash pad, because now, what we do now, like with Sunny Fest, we don't generally park all the cars there. We used to, but no longer, now we just shut off from the, from the school.
Well, and I wouldn't even, I would, I'm not even thinking Sunny Fest, I'm thinking just general Saturdays, kids' park.
So, you know, I mean, it's, I like the idea of a splash park, but you know, we've got a lot of other things on the agenda, including ball fields and sports complex. And if you go to Allen, Allen has a major sports complex in the middle of it, where the kind of the central hub, they've got a splash pad that's bigger than this room. And it's really good, cause if you're taking kid A and you're out there all day long for baseball and you got the other kid, the other kid's happy, cause they get to go play in splash pad and give you some, you know, so
So, where do they put their food concession, not that I'm against it, but where do they
They have them, but you know, I mean, but
So, you gotta walk to the outfield to get food?
No, they've got them spread out in different facilities, cause they have soccer in one area, they have baseball in another area. Central hub near the parking where the splash pad thing.
Yeah, what I was thinking, Mike, as you were saying, is they took the splash pad in the center, in the city, which is usually where I see the
I mean, this, this place is hundreds of meters large, so it's, when I say that, yeah, it's
I like the idea of a splash pad at some point, I think that's a good idea, I think there's, not that I have a priority.
Yeah, it's not a high priority, I just thought I would just gauge the temperature since it comes up sometimes.
Right, kids love them, families love them.
Better get a splash pad at this block.
It might be that big.
There will be water feature at this property and that turfed area will have ability to have water sprinklers, you know, that are moved in. But there's a fountain as well, but not necessarily a splash pad.
Well, we'll just put a sign at the park and tell them to go to your place.
Use the restaurants, right?
Use the restaurants and go play in the fountain.
If they buy a meal and a coffee, they can use our restaurant.
All right, guys.
Hey, any other questions on the Town Center Park?
One thing on the splash pad thing, five years ago, when, before the drought was, I thought it was one of the highest items on our list, based on feedback. But I think we convinced everybody because of the drought that maybe it's, we couldn't do it. So, I think there's a lot of interest, people like myself that have the others. We go, we've been to so many splash pads around the
I guess what I'm hearing is that comes higher than your priority and the money walks out.
It's just something
Considered.
It's just something, it's something that I think can stay on the list, or we wanted to know if it can stay on the list, because at one point it was sort of needing to follow through, so, okay.
All right, we'll move on to Samuel Farm North, which currently has a walking trail and exercise equipment. We do have a couple ideas with, with this, we don't wanna spend a lot of money since it's not our property. So, we have looked at disc golf in, in that area and also possible with the butterfly garden connection on there. Presently, we don't know it at certain times of the year, so most we do its thing and
Is a butterfly garden still in consideration or that was a, the cost of the funding?
It's still consideration.
It is, although we had talked more about New Hope, it's a better location because it is in our ETJ, I'm saying it like it is
It's in our, in our town, where it's
We thought we better know that we're fixing to perhaps receive some of the money for a nature center. But we don't know much about it, we just know we're gonna get it and it's called a nature center and we know where it's gonna be. And I think that would be a possibility for, I don't know anything about butterfly garden, nor do I know anything about nature centers. Forty-five thousand dollars might put in a pretty nice butterfly center.
And that being in Sunnyvale?
I'm sorry.
That is in Sunnyvale.
That's, 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 and Town East, that's
So, in the floodplain of the new Stony Creek, three A or three B, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. All we know is we gonna give forty-five thousand dollars for a nature center.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be there, or is it? I remember, I mean, you guys come this and that.
I think the probability doesn't have to be there, but
Now, is that, when you say nature center, is that that building?
We don't really know, so, so I don't get to the point, right?
I'd have to go back and reread, but I don't
The only reason you know was made, somebody speculated that there'll be a nature center or forty-five thousand dollars and that's it. So, what that meant
It was designated as track three, so that kinda says it was meant to be in that particular area.
Which would actually be a good spot.
So, we don't know what that means right now, so we end up getting the money, cause we don't know, we can't define.
When we talked about having butterfly gardens in different areas of the town, we're not limited to one particular area.
From our priority list, we decided to take it off the table for tonight's consideration, because we don't really have
Great, that's, that's what I'm trying to get, as I'm hinting, I'm saying that's where I'll be, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm real interested in that.
We've got something coming along, but we don't really know where I'll be. If you get to with the, with the crazy or maybe with a shot, you give more detail, the more, where am I, does he go from there?
Just north here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, really on Samuel North, that's all we really are kinda interested in with, with that area. Simply because it's not our park and we don't wanna invest a lot of money into something that, you know, I mean, our contract hasn't even been finished.
Can we, what's the reason, can we give us details on this contract and what, what's our
Well, it's supposed to be a fifty year, I believe.
What's that?
The new, the new contract with
City Dallas.
For City of Dallas.
So, the new contract that we're working on kind of been, haven't figured out whether going forward, the new contract is beneficial to us or not. Right now, what it looks like it's not, and that's simply, and the board doesn't know this yet. The, right now, our current agreement is up in thirty-five years. We, at any point in time, Dallas can give us six months notice and the lease can be taken away from us. So, we were looking at the possibility of changing that to a new lease term, because they can take the lease away without any cause or any reason. So, the thought was if we went back and did it for cause and had a longer period of time. With that, the way our contract currently stands is we have an automatic renewal period after ten years. They no longer do automatic renewal periods. So, then we would have to look at the fact of at the end of year ten, would they consider renewing our contract again? So, right now, I don't know if the benefit of redoing the contract is any different than what we have right now, cause they're not gonna just take the lease away from us, they don't really have a No, and they don't wanna take care of it or anything, so
But they won't do it, do you think, longer than a ten year term on a new lease agreement? Right now, we have a thirty-five years left?
Yeah.
Thirty-five to fifty.
But they can take it at any time for call.
With notes.
So, really, it's just a risk, but, but we know the trust says it can do anything, so it doesn't be a part.
But honestly, if we're not gonna do anything with it, then do we really care what
The lease says?
Yes.
And that's, I guess that's the question, do we spend, we got all this land that's just, oh, there.
Well, the idea about the disc golf was to bring people to the area, but at the time when we started off with disc golf, we didn't have anything to bring them to. Well, now that we're starting with the retail and the economic development, if you build it, they will come, you know, mentality. So, now we might actually have some working with people to eat when they come play disc golf. So, I think we're wanting to start talking about that again, especially if the butterfly gardens are better suited for New Hope or other locations and floodplains.
How many are deductions, Sarah?
We, the original quote we got was around thirty grand, but, which isn't much, however, there was an additional issue with no bathrooms. And we also were looking at the fact that there was no parking. Now, I think we went back and, because we literally want to pay the money to pay the parking lot on land we don't own. And there was some discussion about gravel and other things, so we didn't finish those discussions because we realized that we were maybe a little too ahead of our time on that project and we didn't get a lot of good, it just wasn't a good time. So, if there's interest, I mean, if you think it might be a good use of money to get people to spend money in Sunnyvale, since we're, you know, heading down that way. We still might be a little early, but
On the, on the, on the disc golf thing, when we were actually looking at it several years back, the tree issue that we had, the tree ordinance issue that we had was going to be a problem at the time.
That's been changed.
That's been changed, so we don't have that major issue.
What's the issue again?
Well, it was trimming and cutting trees and the cedar tree. Now
Can we, can we cut them?
Wouldn't allow them for now.
Yeah, can, can we cut the trees to make a
Yeah, well, cedars aren't protected anymore.
Well, how about
We had two different, we had two different groups come in that put on tournaments, disc tournaments and were willing to volunteer their time of helping us plant this out and trim those trees if they're in the way or need to be trimmed up or whatever. So, I mean, we had some free assistance, you know, that we were looking at, so
It wasn't, it wasn't gonna be a money-making opportunity, first, cause you can't make money on that land anyway. So, it was really just a way to bring people to town to use, you know, to spend their tax dollars here, but we can have anything at the time to spend their tax dollars on.
Were you talking about coming off of eighty and you got the back part of the airplane thing, these could be around here?
Yeah.
And really, guys, having worked for the Dallas Park Department for five years, way back years ago, and having read through the agreement over the years and what small connection I've had through with that land and what Dr. Samuel's intent was, why he wrote the document the way he wrote it. And City of Dallas, and Charles can probably fill in on some of this too, because he was with City of Dallas for a few years. What are they ever gonna do with nothing? So, the risk, well, I totally agree with your assessment of the risk, they're never gonna come to get it. I just can't see where they're ever gonna come to.
We made comments of that as well, you know, but, you know, but again, we're looking at it, it's like, okay, is town council going to say, yeah, go ahead and split and put sixty feet out there?
I'm ready.
You know, I mean, we're like, well, maybe they're not willing to go sixty, you know, or whatever it may be.
Yeah, I know. You know, I, I see it from an economic development perspective, that if, if we can build a bunch of pickle ports out there or frisbee golf or whatever, I'm, I'm really, I'm willing to accept that marginal risk that I really think exists.
Location wise, strangely enough, location wise, it would be the prime place for a sports complex. But the issue that always came up before was that it fell under Mesquite PD, right?
Yeah.
So, if you invested that level of money and then Mesquite wanted it, but in some ways, you're like, so what, then you maintain it from here on out?
Well, and there was a, some discussion a couple of years ago, I don't know how valid it was, maybe doing some swapping of Mesquite ETJ for Sunnyvale ETJ. Particularly speaking about the far south end of Lawson Road and out there by the railroad tracks where Sane comes in and doing some flip locks, stuff like that. Which, I don't know if that was a valid plan or not, if it, if it was a valid plan, I think we ought to investigate it and see if we could get Samuel into our ETJ. You know, the one thought that I did have with the town manager of several years ago, Scott, and he and I discussed back and forth. We didn't see the chance of this happening very, very much, but we just felt better getting the Samuel property under our ETJ, because what if something did happen that broke the trust? And now that land becomes available and the next thing you know, Mesquite's got high-rise apartments going in on property. So, I think it's important that if there's, if, if what I was being told a year and a half, two years ago is true about being able to do some flipping, it better protects and lessens our, even, lessens our risk even more. I don't know that I'd wanna spend sixty thousand dollars on building, or not sixty, six hundred thousand dollars on building the complex there. Because there is always an assumption of that risk, I, we're never gonna fight it, but there's other groups around town, cause Dr. Samuel left a lot of pieces of land all around everywhere. And there are people fighting that all the time, and City of Dallas is, I think, Charles, and you can fill in on this, the City of Dallas doesn't want it, and they've been trying to figure out how to do it, from the stuff that I've been coming across.
That's true.
Well, we had, we had Polly Hunter, her husband, worked for City of Dallas, in the parks area, and she has made comments in the past that, the comments that he's heard is that Dallas doesn't want any of them.
When I worked there ninety in the seventies, I worked for the Dallas Park Department from seventy-one, seventy-six, and it was a sore on our back then.
So, it didn't cost a hundred and fourteen or something?
I don't, I don't really see doing anything, because the, the risk is there, that they could, the City of Dallas does not want it, under any circumstances, but
So, they're not
It ends up in the Mesquite ETJ and it's like pulling the dice.
That's a bigger risk, right?
How big of a deal is to, I, I don't even know what's the process, but
Switching?
Yeah, I'm, Mark was saying, I don't know what the discussion should happen.
The last conversations that were had, that is not possible.
But they won't give these?
To not swap, and it's possible that if it gets brought up again, they will annex it into the ETJ.
So, how about other uses, like inexpensive bike trails?
Cause we've talked about that
Dirt bike trails, things like that.
And just ask, yeah, can you mow nature paths through there, you know, and so, yeah, if you do that, we mow it on a two week or three week basis and keep just a nature trail through there, that, that's no cost.
Off, off the, off the, you know, the official
And you could do that in conjunction with
Asphalt.
Frisbee golf.
We could do asphalt, that was one of the questions I wanted to clarify from the council, is there any way we could put, it's the, the parking right now, or the planes could be, or whatever, it's gravel, right? So, we thought of, okay, if we're gonna put this disc golf, we need to make it concrete, I think it was the only option we had. But, so that we don't make such a large expenditure that we put asphalt instead.
This is for you, Mesquite, here's some gravel, come and take it.
I mean, it seems like asphalt or the recycled road stuff you can buy pretty cheap, you can make driveway
Yeah, but I think there's
Our UDO does not allow
Well, that's what I'm saying. Requesting
It would be a variance, if, that's why he's asking.
Right, so we could do the various, right?
It's not even our council.
So, we, cause I think our concern was gravel would not be desirable for people to park on, and asphalt would be a cheaper option.
Asphalt or some road milling or something like that.
Okay, so it sounds like we can keep this on the list as a fairly
Take an option to
An expensive option and a good use of the property.
Something that doesn't require building.
Right.
Something that doesn't require an expensive amount of dollars.
Right.
So, they don't get Mesquite approval by for?
No.
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 But it would just allow, allow people to use, there's so much land and there's, you know, so much forest.
It's the perfect, well, they actually came out and they did a
Was that not ETJ twenty years ago?
Many years ago, yeah.
Many years ago. ET, what?
Trip was?
Yeah, Samuel Farm North was in our ETJ a long time ago.
Being given a break?
Sir.
We gave that a break?
What for? We trade?
We've been charged.
Washing machine.
I don't, I don't remember, I remember walking in when the cedars were about that tall, because the landscape architect, one of them, we're all cedars.
So, the, the parking was one of the, it's the cost and the other one, obviously, the restroom, so if we were to have a lot of amenities, you're gonna want a restroom and that costs money, so
Yeah, I think
But we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I don't think restrooms.
Well, I just wanna say sixty thousand dollars is nothing to the potential retail Well, I just wanna say sixty thousand dollars is nothing to the potential retail side of, once we get more of this retail going. I think, I think we can pay back.
We go to Ballinas everywhere, we're parking gravel, we're parking on it. I mean, we were in the face of a nation south last night, I mean, it's nothing.
Yeah, it would be a phased approach, and I mean, you know, it'd be something that we could do.
The standard's pretty high, but none of these other places could. Termiti Place up in Kenya or...
How about this, let's take a time and move on. We will come back with a plan on disc golf, and it'd be something that ultimately we put together a plan, we have to take it before Dallas, they, and we could potentially...
So, Tracy, all this you're talking about hopefully come back in somewhat timely fashion, right? If you don't, I'm gonna back to this, but I just comment, next week, go and talk about this thing again.
I don't either, so, yes.
I feel we're relatively made progress on this one, I mean, honestly, other than options to do stuff.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, there's so much great land, let's do something with it.
All right, we'll move on to Samuel New Hope.
Just moved to Farms Bridge.
All right. We'll move to Farms Bridge.
That other, the same kinda contract?
Samuel New Hope has the same kinda contract, where we lease it the same way we do Samuel Farm North. Um, but again, we, it's kind of the, been the butterfly trails and concept that we're talking about, so it would just be a matter of coming up with a plan and coming back, um, before council.
That's another ETJ.
Yes, Samuel New Hope is within the town limits.
That we can be right back to, okay. I was thinking about Barns Bridge, I was reading on Barns Bridge, I'm sorry.
Oh, so the agreement we have at Farms Bridge is an inter-local agreement with Dallas that we acquired Farms Bridge when we signed the local agreement to acquire the front, the lake frontage.
So, what's our term, do we have any...
Are not acquiring.
Lease. We lease it.
Lease it.
No.
Can we be a lease right this week?
So, this is...
For cause, get out of council, so we can spend money there. I do have a lease.
Yes, we leased it, we didn't acquire it, I said the wrong term.
We lease it for long-term. I'm just saying, can we put money into it out there and lose it?
Pretty much, they don't want it, I mean, they don't...
I'm sorry?
They don't want it, there are other municipalities, it's similar to other municipalities around the lake edge, and they're all putting money into their, I mean, South Water Utilities doesn't want it.
But what is it, again, it's not just that, it's the whole lake.
It's the whole, we're responsible for the entire lake.
Right, for the entire lake, but that's just the public access point that we can control and do stuff with.
But that's a, I mean, the years back there, it's hard, it's, there's nothing out there.
Yes, it's, you know, it's a really interesting dynamic out there, it just depends on what time of day you go, what you're gonna run into, but if you go out there on the weekend, it was heavily used, and there's families out there, and there's the guys with their ice cream carts and all that stuff, then, then if you went out there a little too late in the day, well, then you experienced a lot of different kind of activity.
But that's a cost, right?
I think that's, the other concern is, is that strap this area on public safety side, we open a park, unless we close it at night, then we're strapping in for some more public safety issues.
Well, I think, I think in that, in that part, it would be a better situation to be able to close it.
Close it at night.
Close it at night, eleven o'clock, whatever, and have...
Can Tracy talk to Sergeant about it?
But, yeah. To me, there's a lot of different factors, because you've got it adjoining just south with the landowners that own the land that eventually is gonna be developed all the way down the lake. Um, you know, I'm gonna get into it on the rails to trails, but there's lots of grant money, there's state grant money for boat access and boat improvements for public parks. Um, so if, you know, depending on what the landowners nearby want, in the town of Sunnyvale, if you wanted to, with matching grant money from Texas Parks and Wildlife, can get up to five hundred thousand dollars a year for boat improvements, a year. It's an annual grant program.
Charge a fee for that boat, right?
Correct, so, I mean, so there's lots of things that can be done with it that can benefit the town of Sunnyvale and Sunnyvale citizens, but also generate revenue that is for people from not Sunnyvale coming to use the facility. And then depending on whatever the landowners want to do, I have no idea.
So, what's your recommendation, what are you, what are you asking for?
Well, we might know what, what the situation with council is about keeping it or opening it.
So, again, I think I'm certainly right, so we have issues, lots of safety issues and concerns, you all know that one, right? So, that's really the reason why to turn it down.
Right.
And that Tracy was gonna be with the surgeon, figure out, what are his thoughts?
And I did, and Sergeant Evan says, you know, give it another six months to a year. He said, no matter what though, you're probably gonna run into the same stuff, um, unless you keep the gate there, close it down at night. Um, we had talked about putting lights out there, and he said, probably in the beginning, you're gonna come to the same stuff, or they're gonna shoot the lights out, so you'll have to maintain the lights. Um, he thinks vandalism will still happen in, in the beginning, but if, just stayed on top of it, but then it all comes down to manpower, you know, who's gonna close the gates at night? Who's gonna open them in the morning? That requires additional staff to be able, or, I'm not saying additional staff, but it requires staff to be able to go out there, open and close them. Um, and then I asked him about being able to patrol the, the park and how often they would be able to do that. And he said, well, right now, they don't really patrol it, but every now and then, um, so if they had to patrol it on a more regular basis, then that would require more manpower from the other. So, so, you're looking at, you know, additional staff or DSO time to be able to do that, and then just the maintenance, figuring out what will be vandalized or not for a time period. I do know there are a lot of families that have, were fishing down there and get calls all the time wondering what we're doing with Farms Bridge, because they wanna go back fishing.
So, there's, there's, you know, to me, it's similar to the town center ask, that you guys want us to come back with a plan and what, you know, but also, it's, it's, so what's the vision of the town? Do you wanna develop that park and make it something that would benefit a lot of people? Or you wanna keep it just nothing? Um, my vision is, depends on potentially expanding the park, but if you go to Grapevine, if anybody's ever gone to the Vineyards Park in Grapevine, it's one of the top-ranked RV parks in the country, and it's owned by the city of Grapevine. It's run by volunteers, and it's a really neat facility. Now, that's, you know, kind of the high-end where you might wanna go, but there's, you know, that, uh, what it is now, or somewhere in the middle, but with lake access, with grant money, with a lot of different things, and then working with the landowners nearby, I think you could develop something that's really cool, that's an attractive revenue.
Agreed, right, so your priority is where this time comes, is that something near-term, short-term, midterm, what, what's, that's what, which we're thinking, or how you've been thought about it?
Well, we haven't thought about it a little bit, but we, we need to know what the status is of both of them. I mean, if we're looking at, if council's looking at six months, a year, two years, three years?
So, Mike, I guess it's a matter of safety, right? So, if he has solutions, if there's income, then we can put police on this.
It's kinda like jobs, and it's, it's low priority unless you guys tell, say, hey, if you guys come up with a cool plan and we agree with it, it'll go live.
Here's, here's the way I would look at it, because, I mean, it does have a history, a long history of security issues. But I'm not against coming up with a plan, I want a cost-neutral plan. Make it an RV park if you think that'll work, but it needs to be cost-neutral, offsetting the cost of the additional security that's gonna be required. That, that type of thing, whatever it might be, I don't know what it is, that, let you guys maybe come up with something.
Until, until there's somebody living out there, or you...
Which is very likely, I mean, even when, when the Smiths do begin to develop that to the south, you know, is it gonna be retail, is it gonna be, uh, uh, I, I for one have always felt like that that is probably one of the most top economic growth opportunities that this town has.
Right.
Is that shoreline. We, we would put, not that the harbor's not already out of business, but it's pretty close, we would put the harbor out of business, you never build on the east side of the lake, in Texas. You build on the west side of the lake in Texas. And you can go to Utah, you can...
Well, with what's going on in the middle of the lake.
Yeah, but, you know, that's such a, a, a potential economic boon for us.
Then you could overplan.
That's right, yeah.
So, short, short-term, it's closed, develop a plan.
And come up with a cost-neutral plan that takes some consideration of...
Especially if you can think about gravity and that's all.
I think that's potential, I would love it.
I would've loved to have a boat ramp down there when I had my boat, because I wouldn't have had to drive all the way around the island.
It's a strong opportunity, man, or one or more, or two.
What about talking to my wife, trying to talk to her about it now?
She's got a lake right behind her.
Yeah. Like, you can wallack, yeah, that's right, or actually...
All right. Okay, next one's an additional parkland, looking at acquiring more parkland, possible floodplain areas. I think Javier has, uh, you gotta set up on floodplain...
Yeah, I just see a lot of the parkland, uh, the, the ball fields in Dallas are built on flood, floodplain land, that there's nothing better to do than, uh, put some level in so that it's nice and neat for kids to play, but I know in, uh, where I live, in the east of Duck Creek Way, there's land that's in the floodplain, and they've tried to sell it many times. Uh, and there's other land around town that's near the actual Duck Creek that, uh, could be used for ball field. So, just thoughts on how to approach it, how do we, either we call, call the people that own the land and say, are you, would you donate it to the, the cause?
I was curious, because I was at a meeting on last Monday night when the developer presented for the neighborhood going in just north, um, in Stony Creek, the gated park, and then, I mean, it was a lot of acreage that's in that floodplain, and he talked about the commuter, Nature Center, and then the trails that he's gonna develop. But, once he does that, then, does, who's, does that revert to the city's ownership and we start mowing it and everything? The part that's north of the street going towards the creek? Or is that part of the HOA and they maintain it? I'm just curious, because like, up in Richardson, my last house, I was on one of those houses that faced Breckenridge Park, and across the street, they went and dropped off, and that was floodplain. And that was all natural area, and the city maintained it, and actually, somebody bailed hay in it, but then the city mowed paths, and then they had, we had bridges, and then you could go over to that, to the improved park, but, um, that could potentially be a good, because there was a lot of acreage.
I think that, um, not the majority, but a, a good portion of that acreage was a part of the original section, part of the original phase, which means that it would be taken care of by the HOA.
So, the Nature Center's gonna be our responsibility, potentially.
But that's just gonna be...
But that's a twenty-four hour parking lot, and whatever we do for the Nature Center, I don't think that's defined right now.
But that's a potential opportunity, it sounds like, as it goes that...
But it could be, the majority of the floodplain becomes part of the Nature Center grounds.
Yeah.
I mean, what, we're, we're gonna put the zoo or whatever it is.
Sunnyvale Zoo?
I don't know what we're gonna do with it, but...
That's a piece.
I just think that could be a potential win-win for the developer and the town if...
Well, and I, I think what would need to happen there in order to make that move forward is to be the, the area that's outside of the acreage that's identified as a phase, would be a negotiation between the acreage and four B, so acquire and just make a determination who's gonna take care of what, because maybe there would be room, uh, for soccer field or two if it's not just purely nature area.
Right.
And, you know, Fair Oaks area of, of Dallas, uh, you know, there's six soccer fields that are there across the street that are always flooded there, that's all in some...
Or, you know, Fire Wheel Golf Course.
Fire Wheel, yeah. But I think it's one of the, I think, yeah, it's, it's a consideration to, to get on the list as you move forward.
I'm, I would be open to it. I just bring that up, because I know it's one that's occurring.
No, and it's the same, same area, I mean, it's, everything along Duck Creek. I mean, I, I used to live in Harbor Ridge Ranch, and they have a nice creek where houses far away from it, that they made that into a really nice...
The answer is in general, right? Obviously, buy the property, obviously, just have all the plans, right? And substitute is good, convenient a lot more, find the right money and the right place, and just permission, buying a lot, it's, it's already in the block.
So, Javier, are you speaking of the land that's in the face of the east of you? Are you talking about Spence's property, going up to Lawson Road? Or are you talking about everything in the east of Lawson Road?
No, I'm on Duck Creek Way.
He's down there where...
Yeah, I'm there, see with the, the sewer plant on the right?
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So, all along there, that's floodplain, and then south Duck Creek, uh, it is a lot of floodplain.
So, is that all in our ETJ?
Yeah. I mean, it's all over the, the, the town, I just know I've seen that property for sale multiple...
Javier asking whether council would be open to the idea, turns out?
Yeah, or if you know of a way to, uh, do the J.R. mind trick on some of these property owners that...
Right, hopefully, I say go after donations. I think, I think, I'm personally for it, I think that's a great use of land that's not gonna be used for anything else. It could provide more soccer fields or weather fields, you know, uh, sports, sports fields. Depending on, obviously, the weather, you know, when it rains, it's gonna be flooded, but hopefully it'll dry out and be used.
Most of that, yeah, most of that land is owned by a few property owners. And, you know, I'm bringing Breckenridge Park again, and, um, Breckenridge Park out in Panhandle Richardson was owned by one family that owned all that, well, Breckenridge Park, half of it's landfill, and so they profited when they used it as landfill, there was, and then, uh, they worked with the city to do some zoning swaps, and then what they accomplished was, um, they put in apartments out of what was out in the middle of nowhere and donated five hundred acres to the town, which became really a nice sports complex and everything else. Now, they obviously made their money off the park. That might not be the approach that Sunnyvale wants to go, but there's other things that potentially the landowners out here want.
That's always negotiations, they...
Well, that's, speaking of negotiations, I mean, we do have 190 coming through that part of town. Can we negotiate, A, Texas, buy extra land so we can build the, the trails along 190? They're, they're on our trail map that supposedly goes to 190, but I don't know who's gonna pay for that. That's not gonna be Texas, right? So, we, when they do their land acquisition, is there...
Something you can't negotiate, I guess.
Yeah, that they can acquire it for us, and so we can build it.
That's what we want with this sort of set of things, and we tried to talk over the south part of the college, they wanted us to pay for the entire, you know, we, they, they do wrong.
Yeah, but well, and I was just gonna say, the, the, this may be far-reaching with regard to the grant stuff that Eric found, but maybe in parallel with the 190 bill, that grant money kicks in, that lets the highway department or, or Texas tollway build that along at the same time. But we probably have to be the ones to instigate and nurture that to make sure that it moves along and happens subsequently. And I don't know if we have an individual within the town to be that, that person.
I know, on the, the rail, the trails piece on widening, the bridge that used to be there, and then... So, I've talked to the Texas engineer when they had their open now, it's like, hey, can we work together to at least leave enough room so that we can have the pillars that will hold the bridge in the future? And they're like, oh, yeah, let me, so, talk to our engineer, and I think our engineer has talked to them about it, so it's same, just having somebody, I think, and your engineer.
It's, it's just something, you know, it's just the common connection.
I need a ten dollars a meeting, so I'll just get the file and talk to him about it.
So, council may ask for B, and we've got two or three major items coming up. How long will you think it will be up? Think it will take a ten-minute break, then we could have other way.
That is fine.
How much more is it you need?
Just take a break.
How much more you think you need?
Just take a while, yeah, exactly.
It's probably gonna be about another forty-five minutes.
Okay, I have your team?
All right?
Let's go forward.
Yeah. So, let's, we post 190, how about that?
That's fine.
Get out, fine.
We'll cut it off.
I think we made a lot of progress, I think. We can talk to the legislature, right?
This was actually done in Burton, Burton did this one, um, it was done in Cleaver. And they had several soccer fields, they had ball fields, um, and again, it's ninety acres, so even if we will be doing something smaller, depending on what we want, we can still end up spending...
Tracy asked, well, I think, I won't speak for everybody, but money-wise, it's just a matter of finding way, that's really what it is. That was the beauty about the previous project, that the worker for the king, he was willing to go fund, fund the project, and that's why I started talking to the citizen, right, and that, tried to get someone to buy it, but, you know, it's off the market, now I got it, right?
I think we need to do some...
Well, what's, what's the update on that land? Is it off the market?
It's off the market.
I think we need to do some forward thinking in that regard, in terms of, we have a, the number of built-out population. I don't know when we're gonna reach that number, I think the number was fifteen to seventeen thousand.
Forty, or five hundred, I thought.
Uh-huh.
About like, fourteen thousand, five hundred?
It might be fourteen, fifteen thousand, but whatever that number is, we need to look at that and look at for a population basis, that much, how many different ball fields do we need? How many soccer fields? do we need? How many soccer fields do we need? How many ball?
So that's already laid out for the the master plan we have.
And 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 it may all be in there. So if that's the case, then let's see how much money it takes to do that, whether we do it as an individual, you know, a bunch of individual complexes or we combine some of those because it's multi-use fields or something like that. Begin to determine how much land we need and then let's go identify the lands and what what resources it's gonna take in order to purchase that land.
I don't, and one of the thoughts you're going to have is, and I'm in here at ninety acres and fifty acres. We don't have too many big portions. I mean, you've got the Lutons but they're certainly not planning to. It doesn't look like they're planning on an athletic area.
However, that may be a negotiating point with them at the same time, but still.
And the Smiths certainly are not planning that. Uh we don't have any large tracks left for that.
Do we have an inventory of the large tracks?
I mean, I'm not sure that, you know, now that we just perhaps turn down the Chris Jackson project, you know, that could be a fifty acre track across from the school. Don't know the price of it. Uh I guess that reversed back to Lutons now.
Might be seventy.
I don't know that for a fact.
So I mean, and you mentioned across from the school, one of the ideal locations would be the phase five of Stony Creek and South Mans and just.
I would much rather see a sports complex.
Just.
Well, I mean, you know, that's only bankruptcy, I guess.
Right, but that if they'd be able to do it, that would be, you know, because people in those neighborhoods already used the lights. So.
Yep.
My experience with this, and I probably have the most at least at this point, is with a kid who plays a lot of baseball in eighteen, uh well, plays eighteen youth football, is these are private enterprises. So like the one Jim mentioned, that he spent some time at this weekend, uh you know, those are owned by organizations and they are big bucks, big bucks for them and for the towns. Um it's every weekend, it's fall, summer, spring. But as far as our town needs ball fields for Serissa, all that, to me, that's a little bit of a different thing. You know, if they could be combined together, like we've worked with that gentleman where as part of the deal, we could get the used fields at certain point in time. Um because the number, nine million dollars was, he was throwing out a way higher number than that. And some of the ones that we play at, there's no way those cost nine million dollars. So.
Well, I miss where turf grade and he brought the price down.
Yeah, and you have to do, if you're gonna have the tournament style stuff, they have to be turf. They have to be or you're gonna lose money. So Franklin is the only one that I know of in Texas. I don't know all of them, but it's owned by the town. But that land, that's out here, uh that's out of conversation. That was donated uh because of oil money. That was a that was just a donation. So um so it was kind of a note. So the town just had to build the the fields and it's a huge moneymaker for them. Um but to me, those are two distinct things. So you were talking about us building out Sunnyvale. Ball fields for Serissa, I think that's a need for sure. But the stuff we're looking at here, these complexes are massive endeavors and expensive with sports medicine complexes and indoor facilities. Um you know, they're, that's why Marucci was involved.
We don't even have anything of quality of Valley Creek or anything like that. No sudden, it not costs nine million dollars. And they don't take ninety acres either. I don't know what they do. I don't understand. I don't know what they do. If they don't take ninety acres, they only take fifty acres. And they've got Valley Creek, it's got soccer and baseball. They have four baseball that.
Football as well.
And maybe football. So so a lot there, less than ninety acres. They sure didn't spend ninety mil- nine million. So.
And I I wasn't against the guy bringing his complex to the walking property.
Yeah.
I just didn't, like I said a while ago, we couldn't make the math work for what he was bringing to us. And that's all we asked is, count your numbers, give us a little bit better picture of what it is that you're trying to do because we can't see how your math is working yet.
Yeah.
And I mean, we would probably been in, I would have been in for it if we could have just seen how the math worked. And it wouldn't have been a constant fact because you're right, there's there's big bucks that can start coming into the to the town coffers as a result of that.
So to your point and both your points, you know, so you've got the for-profit ball field, sports athletics complex on one end and then you've got municipal athletic.
Right.
Facility parks.
That's probably more realistic is what I would give that.
And that's probably more realistic. And that that's kind of where I was headed because that's where that money's, the money comes from these guys.
Right.
Rather than coming to the to the town, it goes to economic development, you guys to be able to do things. And I don't know that we're gonna build a nine million dollar sports complex with the money that you guys get. I think I would love for us to be able to, but I I don't think we're gonna get that.
And that that project there, it there was twenty five acres of improved Bermuda. There was twenty five acres of common. Um it was fitted to operate off reclaimed water. So there was some, obviously the concrete expense, things of that nature. Um there were concession stands. Um but the the backend of things that a lot of times gets lost is the M and O after you build it. And so like that one had a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar maintenance, M and O budget. So uh it did bring in a lot of tournaments. Um it is a moneymaker, like you said, for the organizations and um if the usage agreements are right uh with with the town, if it's not dialed in initially, then it really presents some opportunities for some people to make a lot of money and others to make.
Yep.
But regards to location, just keep in mind, I live in gated Stony Creek on the northern side, very edge and not just light pollution from the football stadium at the school is amazing difference. Um when the lights are on there, all the way to my house, it's the noise pollution. I can hear the call of the game in my living room. Um so you gotta think, my neighbors have a toddler. It was waking my toddler up, you know, and so it's just something to consider. Putting a massive multi-game, multi thing going on next to the schools would be a big impact.
My my. Municipal sports complex.
Yeah, yeah. But putting something huge back there would have a big impact on the neighbors.
These things go all weekend. They go all weekend.
Later tonight too, don't they?
Living room, remember she goes to.
All right, do you have anything else, Tracy, on that?
Well, I mean, I think we still, I think it's still a question that we don't know which route to go down. Are we gonna go down searching for, you know, looking for open land, looking for those big parcels and trying to still partner with the developer to um you know, accompany to do a big sports complex? Or are we going more of the municipal, trying to help Serissa route and piece together what we can with our own budget?
My my vote would be the municipal route and try to mimic kind of what Mesquite and other places do and maximize parking with the school. If we can't do that, you know, if that costs too much, but it's, to me, it's provides the best use for the citizens of Sunnyvale, have municipal facilities that all kids in Sunnyvale can utilize. Um and if a for-profit organization wants to come in and has a viable plan, then well, yeah, let's support them from an economic development standpoint, not a we're doing this for the benefit of the kids park and recreation standpoint.
Because it's not necessarily Sunnyvale kids that you're doing for when you're doing appropriate.
I mean, that's that's economic development.
That's right.
If you're driving and sales, tax revenue and then, yeah, the kids that can participate qualify at that level, well, yeah, then they.
Versus quality of life, which is what.
Parents are still paying for it versus quality of rep.
Which both of them are here money. But it's just how you have to look at the structure.
That's mine.
I agree with the municipal. I mean, a private type deal, you know, when when we first met with him, he's thrown around Marucci, which is has had deep, deep pockets and and I was like, okay, because I'm thinking they're gonna put their bill.
Sure.
And we're just gonna benefit. I mean, they would want incentives and all that. Hotels and just all the stuff that I use every weekend. Um would be great, but I don't know if we're gonna get that. It sounds like there's not a whole lot of options left for them and those that are available would be pretty expensive because you would need pretty good size to make it worth their while. Um so four or five municipal type fields would be fantastic.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having it maybe close to school or, you know, you could use their parking. Like you brought the Oklahoma track, you know, maybe, you know, Great World, maybe maybe that'd be a.
It's just neat when you go to different places like feet that the for-profit place was leased the facilities on the weekend and you're typically parking in the school parking lot while you're using the municipal facility and then there's a municipal operator out there running the, you know, the snack shack and stuff, but.
So we'll figure, just because I know the time is getting, people are ready to go. I'll go to the morning to see what we can come up with.
All right, we'll move on to the next one. Any other questions on that? Ball fields, no, good. All right. Move on to master trail plan.
So in this line, a couple of things. One I have, this is our current trail plan. The green spots that you see are existing trails that we have. The red dotted are future trails and there's one little private trail system that we have here. Also, we're kind of doing our own work in figuring out where the connectivity is missing on some of these trails. So in our current plan, what you see here is what we have. Um Eric was so diligent, our planner, went out and walked Homestead Trails this weekend with the dog. And so what you see in black is actually the trails. It says that they were existent, but they are existent. Um this section is existent, this section is existent. Um then there was, he came down here and walked Stone Canyon and that shows is a trail, but it's not a trail. And so we're trying to work on walking the trails ourselves and figuring out what we have and what we don't have.
So doctrine is what you need, or doctrine.
Dotted is what is future. Yes.
And so Creek Park, what part of Stone Creek? Right, right?
So what if existing, should come by the existing money, existing tree?
Green. The green trees.
That's one more.
So the whole idea of this was just to show you that this is what we have and what is in our plans. Um you can see where we're connecting and where we're not. As you hear from the HOA is that there's some disconnects and how do we work on those?
But you know, when you look at that, the dotted, the red dotted areas are where there's not any development.
Well, and some of these, like, so this trail is in existent now. Um with clearly estates. Um this was a future through the Glacier Track and then this one is in existence. So we'll update this and um.
This here is probably happened because they're building all this out now. So that was probably getting pretty close to happening, but it isn't already. But of course, this is a rubber right away. There's not anything developed. Here, well, now I said this area appears that that's, some of this is fixing to get developed because we just proved it there. But right here, no, this is, well, this is uh. None of this is developed. And it's, so those trails aren't gonna go down until it does.
So that.
So it's the one like ten plus three, is that even five plus six upon the trail system? Just the green line where it's supposed to be, red dotted line, right?
Yeah, it's this right here. It might not even be five percent.
Yeah.
It's a little bit over here.
I think you have just seventy plus, then seventy plus.
But again, the majority of it that's not developed isn't in the place that's been developed yet.
Okay, Tracy, so what's your point? So you have a lot of, you have here, you're gonna go here.
So you had tasked us with going and seeing what the different connections are and how much they cost to figure out what we can do. So we're gonna.
So I was thinking that, yeah, seventy plus, then thirty plus, we should be done. So if you can go pick the next.
So we'll work on that, but so that you see where the trail plan is, but the major topic of conversation more for this point is talking about the Rails to Trails project. And um so I'm gonna let Eric.
Show me that fabricating base screen.
Basically following this right here.
Do you want, you can pass this over there. It's easier.
Yeah.
Better color.
Do you have copies for us all?
Print around me this one. What I held on to from twenty fifteen, I think. But um okay, so Rails to Trails. Um one of the main reasons I volunteered and came to 4B was because of my vision of what I was hoping to accomplish with Rails to Trails. And um you know, when we go back in time and pre me being on 4B, you know, the town and members of 4B, 4A and other council members put together the master trail plans together, they included Rails to Trails plan and it's on that future trail map that was done before many of us were in the positions that we're in. Um in twenty sixteen, the opportunity came up um to potentially go active fairly rapidly with acquiring and then developing uh the Luminate Energy Trail Corridor, Rail Corridor. Um so I'll pass around kind of what the facts were back from back then so we can get those correct. If you don't want to pass those that way. When we went active and were trying to accomplish that plan, the major hurdle was the acquisition of rail. Um in hindsight, I believe almost everybody was in support of the overall plan, but there was a lot of sticker shock involved in it. So the document that just got passed around to you is actual cost outline for if we were to move forward and go active with that plan. The plan was to go, um if approved, was to break ground and complete most of the project in twenty eighteen. So if you go all the way to the bottom of page one, the total cost at that point was estimated to be six million, six hundred eighty thousand dollars, nine hundred, you know, nine seventy one. That included the bridge for one point three million dollars to go across eight. Originally, we planned on doing it without the bridge and then after going to TexDOT and North Central Texas Council of Governments, they wanted it. They were highly interested in this plan, but obviously that sticker number is quite large. You flip to page two and where this was gonna be funded from.
Six point six is all of it, charmer, yes?
Correct, not counting acquisition. So you gotta acquire it first. That's what it cost to build.
Twenty sixteen prices.
Yeah, so what's that?
And twenty sixteen prices, concrete.
Yeah.
That was estimated at building it in twenty eighteen. But yeah, so now it's gonna be.
Three more.
Um the part that I don't know, because we weren't involved in the presentation that was given, the person that gave the presentation isn't here, but then, you know, it got turned down initially by council at that time. Um this was gonna be funded through a matching program and what's illustrated here was the matching dollar. So the program, and I verified the day through TexDOT, I visited with both TexDOT and North Central Texas Council of Governments and a new announcement's coming out for twenty nineteen applications. Um and so the plan is, or the grant program's gonna be live once again. It's a four to one matching program. So for every dollar that the town of Sunnyvale or nonprofits that are part of this contribute, you get four dollars paid towards the plan. So the town of Sunnyvale's cost was gonna be one million, six hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars.
What did I say again?
Page two, the second number from the bottom. Page two, the second number from the bottom. Of that $1,617,214, we also have, and I've got the document here somewhere, $500,000 that's already been committed to us. And we have a legal document by the county of Dallas. So for that one, it's a one to one match. If we come up with $500,000 and invest it, the county of Dallas will give us the other $500,000. So that gets us to $1 million of our dollars.
So maximum is $500,000?
Correct. One time match, $500,000. Here's the legal documents signed up by the judges, the commissioners court.
How long is it good for? Is there a time limit?
Oh, I won't, and we'll give it to you, you're the attorneys. Additionally, we were told, and this was approved by Tech Dot, you know, it has to be something we run back through the city manager's office and confirm. But Tech Dot and North Central Texas Council of Governments said, yeah, that money you could use towards it because you're incorporated into your plan. So my understanding is that there's money that's been escrowed and put in a tunnel under Collins Road by the developers. Right?
Same amount.
And, um, and that money was somewhere, can't remember what the number was, but I thought it was around half a million dollars as well. They said if you incorporate that tunnel into your trail program to include, which when you go through the whole rails to trails, we weren't just doing the rail to trail, we did a couple of connecting routes. They said, well, yeah, that's part of the plan. So that escrowed money could be multiplied times five. So if that was $500,000, you get another $2 million of grant money.
So by just by putting that connection in the pipeline?
Correct. So out of pocket, the town is out $500,000. You get $500,000 from the county. You roll in that escrow money, and that is the town's out of pocket cost. Other than acquisition. Now, if you, you know, remove the grant money or the county's money and you remove that escrow money, it's still 1.6 million, which fits within 4B's budget. Backing out and going to some other granting establishments, we have Safe Routes to School. So Safe Routes to School, we partnered, met with Doug. Um, we did a Safe Routes to School program to evaluate the ins and outs to the campus and all that. That was being incorporated in as well. Tech Dot and North Central Texas Council of Governments loved that we were doing that. There's a separate grant program with a $5 million cap, same four to one matching dollars. So in both instances, they said, hey, this budget, you know, we know you're gonna go over the $5 million cap. Don't worry about it. We love this project, we want you to do it. And this is for a one-year grant application. To me, the rail to trail, if that's what you know, whatever we end up naming it, is the artery of the future planned trail system for the town of Sunnyvale. I've only had a few people that ask me questions about it. The ones that have been curious and understand, well, why do we need it? It was more from a financial standpoint. And when you walk through the financials of it, they're like, okay, yeah, no, I see it. There's only been a couple of people that have been opposed to it. And they have some viable reasons, but it's typically because of the two neighborhoods that they live in that are, one's semi gated and one's gated. Um, and just their understanding of what's gonna happen in their, their neighborhoods. Stone Canyon, all but one person I've talked to in that neighborhood is in full support of it. They love the idea of it linking so their kids can get across and get to the school. Among the school finance committee, it would allow the school to drop busing to a majority of, um, not a majority, but a lot of people, which would save them money. So to me, it's a, you know, the major artery, it links north and south. And then we build out going east west to fill out the rest of the program. This chart, which I won't pass around, but it basically is 16 granting agencies under the US, US Doc, US Department of Transportation. When you write, read through all they include, it's not only for this type of a program, but there's grant money on the bottom one here, paved shoulders for pedestrian or bicycle use. And you read through what the requirements are, it's like if you're building a road, we'll pay for the shoulders to be paved so it can improve pedestrian bicycle use. There's all sorts of other things in there in terms of even just park fences and stuff like that. But 16 agencies, um, granting all sorts of specific projects.
Let me ask you a question, I mean, talk about grants, grants is really, you know, that's free money everybody loves it. In the past, I used to push for that with the previous management. One of the things I heard over and over again that Sunnyvale does not point five more. I want the any grant, but good number because of the median income and the situation we have. Yeah, now like I'm a citizen, what are, what is your take on that? Or what is your?
No, the Tech Dot, again, in this, it's, um, these granting agencies all have to do with transportation. And it's, and I mean, it's kind of a weird, you know, web of EPA. So, you know, they've got all the stats in here for each kid that walks to school this many days a week. It reduces greenhouse commissions by however many thousand pounds a year. And so it's, the money is coming from all sorts of different sources. Um, and it's encouraging fitness, it's all sorts of different things. And it has nothing to do with, um, the finances of the, of the particular community. So examples being, that I looked up, I mean, it was a lot of kind of upper end communities are the ones that are getting a lot of this grant money because they're the ones that are doing the project.
Katy Trail.
Correct, Katy Trail's a great example. And it was done, the railroad donated that right away. And then a not-for-profit developed it all. Um, we've also have a not-for-profit, the person that created it has since sold his house and removed out of Sunnyvale. But it's still live and active and it's the Friends of Sunnyvale Trails. And members of that are wanting to, you know, begin to participate. Through, um, Texas Parks and Wildlife, there's 10 grant programs that we can utilize for trails as well as, you know, Kevin's really interested in doing a, um, a rec center. Well, there's a million dollars a year in here that can be granted. It's an annual grant for indoor recreation facilities. So there's such a large amount of money that's available. As long as we have a plan and agree on what the plan is and articulated and work towards that common end, I think we can accomplish majority of what we talked about tonight, as long as we work together towards that common goal. I don't believe we communicated the cost benefit structure of the rail plan well the last time. And granted, you know, we had to get the acquisition. So that's the big hurdle on the rails to trails at this point. We stopped communication with the power company because, you know, we didn't know what was gonna happen with it. Um, they were amenable to selling it. We've since done more research and believe that the original survey that was done, the original survey and appraisal that was done, they used across the fence appraisal to come up with the value of the rail line. So if it crossed through, like it goes through her neighborhood, they were valuing it based on the lot prices on either side of it. Well, it should be substantially discounted from that lot price, in my opinion. And David Holly came up with some numbers. And in my view as well, I think the town has a little bit of control over saying, you guys aren't mowing it. You're not maintaining it. I don't know what the tax level is that they pay on it, but it seems like, and Chris was, last time I talked with him, he was throwing around some legal ways to potentially have the town acquire possession of it. Um, but I think if we get to the right person within the power company, and it's happened, it's an investment firm, it's owned by a private equity firm. Um, it could be a win-win for them as well to donate it in a favorable light. We develop it primarily through the use of grant money. Yes, it requires us to do some out of pocket. And then there's the ongoing maintenance and expense to maintain it.
Any idea how much would that be, what idea?
Um, I don't have it in front of me right now, but we did, we knew that number.
Eric, from what I remember of all the conversations, I, I was, I was for it. We just couldn't figure out how to do it financially. That I, that I remember, that's the reason why we didn't go forward with it.
At that point in time, it required, it required a lot of things to happen right.
Yeah, it, it had to do with the grant money that can only be applied for every two years. And we should be applying for it now because they give it out like in February or something. And then the, the cost of the land, if I remember right, was 4.5 million?
No, it was, we got.
Or praise that, praise that.
Right, and we got it down to 1.6.
Okay, okay. And so.
And at 1.6, we talked it over and said, yeah, we think it's more than we should pay for it. But based on the long-term value, we still thought it was a viable.
I was just thinking, and I might be remembering this wrong, that we said, let's put it on the back burner because we missed the opportunity on some grant money. We, and in fact, Tracy and I talked about this over the past few months. I, I thought we were supposed to be pulling it forward come this year because of that. I remember if it was Parks and Wildlife or whose money it was, it was gonna become available every two years.
Yeah, Texas Parks and Wildlife is annual, the due dates are October 1st.
Okay.
Um, and you can actually apply retroactively for Texas Parks and Wildlife. So when we moved to Glacier Track, that's a great place to talk that through. But any of our connecting trails, on the North Central Texas Council of Government, which is money that comes through Tech Dot, that comes from the federal government. Those, they haven't announced it yet. They told me they're gonna call me tomorrow and give me the estimated announcement date. And then you gotta do your applications and everything, that'll be by the middle of next year. Where we have it prepared.
So we're ready to go.
David's last thing, it wouldn't take much to revamp it. But there's still the hurdle of acquisition. So you either have to, you have to control the property, you don't have to own it. So even if the power company is willing to sign a hundred-year lease, that you have control of it, then you can move forward.
So let me ask you a question. If I remember looking at David's numbers, the appraisal of that acquisition is probably more than $400,000 to $500,000 if the appraisal's correct.
Correct, and the tax value is like three something.
So did y'all look at the possibility of having somebody like ERS purchase and donate and we name that trail after them?
We haven't moved forward with any of that yet, in terms of what are the other options? So I researched the board of directors and had a long list, and we were starting to do a kind of an attack on who knows who and who can network with what.
But the naming rights of that trail, somebody donating land is a possibility.
Yeah.
I mean, we call it Luminate Trail.
Or even Luminate Trail.
I don't, I don't mean donate, to give us money to purchase that and we can name the rights after them.
And that's where the Friends of Sunnyvale Trail, I think, would do better at asking for donations than.
Very possibly.
Than the town.
Than the town.
Or representatives.
Very possibly.
In our roles.
So if I heard you, first of all, I'll tell you, that was one of the best presentations that I've seen in six months. Top to dog, timelines, money, data. Thank you for your time, I appreciate that. The second thing is what I heard is that this possibility, we can get this thing at no cost to the town.
Fairly.
Consider even double cost, it would be no.
Right, the town still has to, the town or the not-for-profit, the, the team has to come up with that first dollar.
Yeah.
To get the four. But correct, with the other committed matching dollars. And then again, I know there's the escrow, but I don't, the number I was told was 500. I mean, I don't know if that's right or wrong.
If we get down to 500,000, somebody else is doing all the other stuff, it's something it sounds like.
But by incorporating that already planned tunnel, wherever it's gonna go, the access to the schools, you know, that, that money can be allocated towards our dollar.
And that's one of the reasons why we were jumping on this the last time. Because we, Eric did a lot of the work, but we knew that the ultimate cost to the town or 4B or whoever was going to be minimal, as long as we were able to proceed and go with the grants. You know, and, and push forward on those grants and the bottom line was like, well, we got this whole thing and it cost us whatever.
So Eric, you did.
$300,000, I mean, it was like, man, you couldn't pass that up. So that's why we were pushing for it at the time, so.
If there's enough support for this project, what do you think are the next several steps timeline wise?
Timeline wise is we would move back forward with, I don't believe we'd need to bid it out with other contractors because we've already worked with David on the grant application again for the coming year. But also take a group effort. David McCaslin.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
He's the one that put the whole.
He's the one that put the plan together before.
Put this trail plan together and the cost and came up with all the estimates and all that. And he's highly experienced and highly thought of. We researched him in hindsight and.
He's a grant writer?
No.
He is a architect and trail specialist. He did the, the bridge that's at Maki Bur Station, that's one of his designs and builds.
So we, we are using his service?
Correct. We have in the past.
We have used his service, yes.
Um, but would be to continue to work with him. And then as a group effort, research and decide how we want to approach the property owner. The last time we approached the property owner, we went through the, you know, lowest ranking individual. And I, I get it, his job is to make money for the company, so.
We can talk about the power company, right?
Correct, so he came in and we want X and we said we want, we'll do Y. And then they came back with, okay, we're okay with Y.
And if you look at it, if you look at it process wise, he said a situation where you think, if you don't get to this decision box, if we listen, make this criteria, this is done. In other words, I'm assuming there's gonna be several boxes, right? In other words, it's gonna cost us $10 million, $6 million. Probably this won't be the right one, I'm assuming, right? But it's gonna be, you can this money, okay, maybe I can go to the next step. If I go to this way, do you have, do you have to check it out?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, again, the number one.
The steps.
The number one in the critical path is checking off the block of acquisition slash control. So you can move forward with the full grant writing, grant approval, as long as you have control. So if we came to an agreement with Luminate to give the town control with the caveat of we get approved for the grants, before you close, you still can move forward.
In other words, you don't have a check, even if they get free, or if we get a, if we write a check, we'll write a check only after we get, the whole thing is working, is that what you're saying?
Kind of the same thing we do on more.
In other words, we don't get the, we don't end up expending $400,000. And still the property get to know where, the reality.
Well, yeah, and we don't get stuck paying $5 million to finish out a project.
Right, or we have the project left to clean and handle. Right, and the, the North Central Texas Council of Governments, I mean, they don't approve the grants unless they know you're committed. So I mean, their goal is, and they, I mean, it's pretty impressive. I mean, they're like, you gotta factor in override, you have to factor in inflation, you have to factor all these things. So don't come to us asking for three, and then you come back and say, well, the program's five. Cause they're just saying, we approved X, not Y, and now you gotta figure out how to pay for it.
So let me ask you, if, again, I'm just asking for, if we decide to move forward, with that situation, we end up spending a lot, we answered this question already. We end up spending a lot of tax, a lot of money, but we cannot take it out of the gorilla because of.
I don't believe so. So as soon as I know that the new grant is available, and we get the verbal confirmations again from them, I, I'm confident it would be 100% funded and complete as long as we work out the acquisition side of it. And to me, that's where we need to agree, and that should probably be in closed session. What's the max, you know, town would be willing to go on acquisition if they play hardball? Or do we take, you know, again, they're a utility company. Technically, they're a private investment firm, but it is, you know, an energy core core. So they have their legal powers just as much as the municipality does on the use of that land, so.
Which David, I think that's what Marson, David F. D. would have donated to us.
We name it after the attorney. I'm here, they're not big time.
Chris did bring up a couple of legal options that he thought would be viable, and so it would be submitted as again.
So are you looking for a thumbs up, thumbs down from the council, whether you're just gonna move into the next step? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I mean, I believe, I believe everybody's interested in moving forward with it. But that's would be the next closed door thing would be, when you get to the acquisition of the property, what would be the?
So anybody opposed to this going forward? Okay, sounds like nobody's opposed.
Nicely done, Eric, appreciate that, well done. Nicely done Eric, appreciate that, well done.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Running out of time here.
We got three minutes.
Three, seven, two, two, two minutes and.
You guys have.
Laser property.
So I'm gonna cut to the chase.
Cut to, cut to the chase.
Yeah, I like it, so, so then Tracy, Mike, um, we talked a couple of weeks, maybe a week or so back, because I wanted to meet with him about this meeting, Calhoun. I remember Tracy coming back and asking for like some amount of dollars, ten thousand dollars, I think, to bring the RFQ, for the consultant in. There was a discussion at that time. I believe the Glacier Track Committee was moving forward with two things. Bring some sort of equestrian facility and trade, mix of what it is. So, and there's some council members thought that the goal of the RFQ was to figure out the best use of the property. Tracy did explain to me when this was brought to the council, a few months back, the agreement council made was to spread it in this, and if Tracy said that's the decision, then that's fine. So what I told Mike and Tracy is, maybe the first question here is, is the council asked us today, Tracy, I want to speak with you, just want to get to the, you know, get to the point, right? Is the, is the county council comfortable with just moving those two options, eh? Tracy, I'm willing to take off from you, because there's a bunch of questions.
Well, just to.
We'll talk our process in a minute.
Just to kinda, so in July twenty seventeen, the town and the EDC bought the property. In November, we formed a subcommittee to discuss the property because there was some discretion on, um, what council thought and what the board thought. So we put together the subcommittee. And the conversations with the subcommittee, it was, um, we came before town council in April of this year, an RFQ to move forward with the Sunnyvale Stables. And at that point in time, both the 4B board and town council had approved to spend up to ten thousand dollars to move forward with the RFQ that was presented, which was for Sunnyvale Stables, which was just stables, maybe a little riding arena, um, washing station, tap room. So we moved forward with RFQ process, we ended up hiring the firm. In that time period, we got a fee proposal and when the fee proposal came back, it was a little bit more money than the ten thousand dollars. So at that point in time, last month, brought it back to the 4B board, brought it back to council to be able to approve three thousand dollars additional funds from each of the entities. 4B had approved to move forward and continue down, um, with hiring the firm and getting a master plan development of the property. And council had decided that they wanted to take a step back and see if that was the best use for the property. So that was why it's been brought before y'all tonight, was to kinda discuss what those options are, what council's thoughts are on wanting to move forward with this property. Whether we continue down the path we're going, or if there's another route somebody would like to take, just in some, some direction.
And the discussion was to go, having a discussion with the 4B and council, to understand what is the common desire of the property. Is that, you're not very understanding from that council meeting?
Yes.
Because I know 4B wasn't talking in favor of the property anyway, that town?
Uh, no, yeah.
I got it, we're right.
We were not, yeah.
But Tracy, we are here today.
Well, we're here today, exactly, we, we're partnered with it today.
That's where some.
You have.
You're doing the chase.
You're doing something with it.
So.
All right.
And I was saying the RFQ was supposed to include trails as well, it wasn't just, it wasn't just a stable.
It is some equestrian facility and trade, right?
Yes, it was gonna be trails to connect, it was going to be trails that have to connect to other neighborhoods as well.
So the first question for me is, does this council agree with that mission or not? That's the first question. Tracy, you taking it in the other?
Sure, no, you're fine.
I, I just want, now, the RFQ has to be started again.
So my concern in September was that the RFQ was too narrow. Why, if we're gonna spend thirty or forty thousand dollars to the study, we're already saying, we want to do something with horses, we wanna do some of the stables, and we want trails. I'm just wondering if at this time, we should make it broader, so basically, what can we do with this property? Is, are there other uses or purposes that we can use it for? Uh, because my concern is that the RFQ, if we follow the RFQ and we get the results back and we have to put in three hundred thousand dollars to make a bunch of stables, that might not be economically feasible this time. So then we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and figure out, okay, what are we gonna do with this property? So instead of having that, what I think is a real risk of maybe not being happy with our results from the RFQ, why don't we make the RFQ broader initially, so at least we have other options to look at? So that was my concern in September.
I mean, what are you, what are you looking for?
I don't know, that's why, I mean, that's why I think we're paying for consultants, right?
I think that from my perspective, um, we had a lot of discussion on 4B about the horses and do we like the horses or not? And it seems, and we've come to the consensus, depending on if we can get it for the right price, that the horses are a nice part of the town's ambiance, that same branding that we keep talking about, so it's not, it's hard to put viable value on keeping the horses there, but there was a lot of discussion leading up to the RFQ that led to us putting it out in that way, is what I'm trying to say.
And I would say personally, I am for, I like the horses, I like to drive by, I drive by every day, I do like the horses, but just wondering, in the long term, you know, is that the right thing, or is it, is it gonna be feasible to do something?
You guys yard space each other?
We're sitting accordingly for this reason.
He's on like other side.
So after the property was bought, it was posted, and you'll see the, that this is what we're doing with the property, is it will, the plan for the property is to allow the horses to continue to be there. And during that point in time, the overwhelming responses that were given, um, came back pretty heavy in being able to keep it the way it is. So at that point in time, that was why the direction was, that's why the RFQ is so tailored to what it was, because that was the direction at that point in time, to continue down the path of having it, the open space with the horses, um, because so many of the citizens really did like that concept.
You, you might all remember, for you guys on council, that this was proposed to be a housing development.
I remember that.
Yeah, this was proposed to be, or the, this was the Glacier property. This was, uh, uh, the same people, actually. And that just did not go over well at all with either neighborhood, certainly did not go over with the horse people who were being run off their property. And, and through much discussion, I guess, uh, you know, the town ended up buying the property. And they bought it under the pretense that all the neighbors around there, plus others throughout the town, wanted to see the horses stay.
Well, I think we bought it under the pretense that the actual land was going to be actually cleaned up and that it was going to be used for something in the long run that could be useful, and not just left in its current state.
No, I didn't intend, I didn't imply it when we left its current state. We talked about what it would look like if the town took it over. But the intent of that was it was remaining as a horse or equestrian type use. We weren't gonna, we weren't talking about building a library there or a rec center there. Uh, we weren't talking about building a different housing project there. I mean, I know that there, you know, you could have taken fourteen houses, made it six houses, but I don't think anybody wanted that. So, uh, that's how it became, uh, what it ended up being in the RFQ, was a continuation of the, um, of that equi- equestrian type use, with improvements. I think if you decided to change that, you would, would open that can of worms all over again with the neighborhood. Saying, why are you chasing the horses away?
I think it goes beyond just the people who live right around it, you know, I don't live around it, but for me, it's a thoroughfare I go down a lot. It was one of the things when I drove into Sunnyvale the first time, to look at a property that I liked, drew me to Sunnyvale. I was considering moving either in Dallas, I didn't wanna go to a suburb, um, but Sunnyvale attracted me, um, because of the way that it looked and being the horses and open space and being more of a small-town country feel. So when it came available to purchase, it seemed important to keep that as, I forget what, what is the term that, oh, you want to hit it? As a central part of the town that a lot of residents pass to keep the feel of Sunnyvale, that we're, you know, I mean, it's a big challenge for us to try and identify what are the ways that we can keep it as we're growing so quickly, and that seemed to be a key part of the town, and the feedback I've gotten and the feedback we get on Facebook, it's, um, not, not viable, but it's still, for the most part, supports that, and with the horses too. But the question is, can we do it for the right amount of money? And the only way to find that out is to go through this process and have a drawing and a quote done. We often get to this point and then freeze, because we don't wanna spend any more money on something that might not actually happen, and then nothing ever happens.
So I'll say that probably raises the most questions about this, because I have no problem with horses. What I have a problem with is how much are we gonna, how much tax dollars are we gonna spend to enjoy the view of horses? And so, going back to your survey, I agree, we can ask a survey that says, do you enjoy the horses, yes? But if you ask a survey question, say you're willing to spend one and a half to two million dollars to enjoy the horses, your tax dollars, the answers might be different. They might be the same, but they might be different, so it's on how we ask the question, right? And so, if we wanna head down the road and spend the thirteen thousand dollars or whatever it was on the RFQ, that's fine, but in the end, we started someplace and we don't really know the endgame here, because we, we know it's gonna be, I guarantee you it's gonna be more than a million dollars to build what that RFQ said. If, to build a stable, a new fence, and make it presentable the way we envision it, it's a million-dollar shot. So I guess the question is, us 4B willing to partner and spend upwards of a million dollars to have a, a something that a very, very few of the citizens can actually use, maybe you put a trail around it and it does add more to it, but something visual for our town, are we willing to spend, are we willing to put like three hundred and, I mean, what we bought for?
Four hundred.
Four hundred thousand dollars, we're already in there for four hundred thousand dollars. And now we're looking at spending, I mean, we can let the RFQ go and find out what Sam is gonna spend, but are we willing to go to our taxpayers and say, are you willing to spend this much money to look at something? And I agree, the residents around, hey, I looked around by there and seen it, and those residents around there are fine, but if you ask them if they're willing to spend a million dollars or tax, tax dollars to do it.
Right, we have that same issue with everything we do.
Like, what?
Town Center Park.
I know, but, but.
Everybody goes there.
But you have to own a horse to enjoy that place, right? So if you want to actually enjoy it, other than just look at it.
They have kids to play on ball fields.
Yeah, but.
You have to wanna walk on trails to go on a trail all the way from Sane to, to.
But you look at the numbers, Jim, you have to agree, the numbers were way out, I mean, I'm not sure it's.
I'm just saying though, that there is a, a number of people in this town, that if you say, would you be willing to spend a half a million dollars on the rails to trails, they're gonna say no, just as they may say, you wanna spend a million dollars on horse pasture.
And he may be right, I guess my point is, is that, that's fine, if you wanna spend that money, then, then let's, let's put it up with vote, let's put a vote out.
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna say the question he did about the, about the RFQ, because I'm like, I, I wouldn't want to spend a million-plus dollars on a huge horse facility. Actually, when we first, when we first bought this land, we were told the town couldn't actually own horses on land, that the town.
Well, yeah, we weren't playing on.
Yeah, we weren't, this wasn't meant to be a horse pasture, in our, in our original mind. It was meant to be trails connecting our existing trail system with possibly a gazebo and a fixed-up lake. And then it morphed into something else, the conversation.
You all had horses in the middle and all that.
Right, and, and that was the thing, so then it, then it turned into the horse facility.
You don't have to build a million-dollar equestrian.
And that's, and that's true, and I agree with you.
Open stables.
Open stables.
Open stables are much cheaper.
So here's, here was. I wanna weigh in on, on that part of it, because I'm gonna tell you, I've, I've got some friends that actually own equestrian centers. And their worry to me is what we're looking at right now is a horse ghetto. And if that's what Sunnyvale is ruled, and I'm gonna tell you, I take a different exception, and I drive down Johnson Road. But if we're gonna build something, it shouldn't look like that, in my opinion, that's just me. It should look like something that looks like what this town wants it to look like, and I think you're looking at probably around three to four million dollars. I don't think you're looking at a million. But if they want, I'm not opposed to horses, but horses are extremely destructive, they don't just eat the grass, they chew it down below the ground. It is a destruct, it's a destructive animal, so if we want to do that, and have a private person maintain that, that's great. But in the, in the condition it's in now, I'm gonna tell you, I don't enjoy looking at it, just for, just to be honest, the horses have been bred there, two of them have been put down in the last year. So if you start asking those questions to the town, you're like, what are we looking at? Hey, I like animals, I like the long ones, even though I think they're kinda dangerous. And I like the horses, I, I do. But every time I drive down Johnson Road, what I see are two blind horses that I feel sorry for. So if we're gonna put horses there, it needs to be done right, and I'm not opposed to horses.
Well, we're, we agree, we agree, we wanna do it right, but we're not looking to put Lone Star Park out there either.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You guys are putting out Lone Star Park, you know, this.
Of course, it's really, it's what we're putting out there, that's why we're doing this.
It's a liability for the town.
But I thought the RFQ, yeah, I thought the RFQ was gonna give us some options, and I thought the RFQ was also gonna tell us how much it was gonna cost, but if we looked at the RFQ, it didn't really give us that, it was just gonna tell us a drawing, so then we have to have another RFQ to find out what it costs, is that right?
No, the RFQ will.
I had, I had y'all's concerns and I was kinda, I was, they'll tell you, I was like, I don't wanna pay money to, to do this, because I don't wanna pay to build the facility. Because my thought was, why aren't we doing an RFP? And get, put it out there for horse operators and say, if you came in here and you ran an operation and you had, have, you know, if we carve off whatever, wherever the, because the trails were perimeter trails, it's not like a cross crossing or a big loop or anything. So if you had X amount of land, and we signed a lease agreement with you, like the current one, for a dollar a year, for thirty years, and got five people to, you know, or get nobody, if you got nobody, you're like, well, that's because nobody thinks they can make any money even in a dollar a year. But then it was explained to me, this was more along the lines of, with the professionals who've designed horse facilities, because I'm not, to come up with what could viable go here and what it would cost.
And it was supposed to be like plug-and-play options, I think, where we could kind of, like plug-and-play options, like pick and, like pick and choose, like from minimal to maximal options.
But then you can take those options to an operator and say, would you wanna build this with some lease agreement, or would we want to build something for whatever the number is, because to your point, if you just had stables that you could lease out with somebody, but, you know.
Let me throw out.
I don't know if that'll make money yet.
I, I wanna take a real strange turn here. I, I don't disagree, again, all the years up with the tiered horses have been there, I've not been real happy with what that corner's looked like, but I wanted to save that corner. But something that's really come to light from a technical perspective, that we don't have all the data behind us yet, and I don't think anybody's ever even thought about. And that is, but it's, it's come to my realization after all these heavy rains.
Yeah, that might have to be a giant lake.
It, well, in order to solve a lot of the, I, I don't think it needs to be a giant lake, I think it needs, it might need to be a two-tier detention system, where the first tier is not in there yet, the, the second one exists. But in order to, and I'm not just trying to protect some residents downstream, I'm trying to actually get water out of the M Streets upstream to, uh, upstream, to include Homestead, the new phase of Homestead that's coming in, that does drain through that glacier pond. Now, we can't get the, uh, yeah, drains through the glacier pond, now, the new glacier development, there's no way you'll get it to this, if you will, new detention. It has to go to the glacier pond, there's no way you can keep that from happening. But I, this was part of the reason why, and I didn't realize, I didn't have this realization, I was actually thinking about this yesterday, or no, maybe it was the day before, when I realized, wait a minute. wait a minute, let's quit worrying about the horses for right now. We may have an entirely different perspective on this when we get the drainage study back and find out, and this was what I was hoping for with the, with the RFQ or the RFP, more precisely an RFQ, is the RFQ would have gone at a more global perspective from somebody that got all the input about what was going on on that piece problem. And maybe I'm, I'm all awash in my thinking, but Saucy and I spent a Saturday afternoon driving around town when it was raining and people were getting flooded. And we're kind of doing our shade tree mechanic assessment analysis. And it took me until yesterday sitting down thinking, I think we need to rethink this again. And thank goodness, maybe we haven't stood, I'm not against it. I just think maybe we need to get this drainage study report back before we proceed a whole lot forward and make sure that we're not going to screw something up or keep something continued screwed up. Maybe there's a way we can solve several problems in parallel.
When is that coming?
Tomorrow.
I can't wait.
That was, that was a question that I brought up probably two years ago on this, when the pond itself, which isn't that deep.
Right.
Could have been dug out.
Well, and when Homestead.
Which would have made it deeper.
And when Homestead went in, Chris Jackson went in, he spent, I don't remember, one of you guys might remember, three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, they hiked in the dam and then.
To hide the dam, put it in an overflow. He did a lot of good things to it.
Right.
But he didn't impact anything that happened on the M Streets. And any of the water that's on the south side trip does eventually go and goes, eventually gets into Long Creek, one way or the other. Well, the less load we can take off Long Creek, then the less of an issue. It, it's a two-sided thing. We're really going to protect two people downstream. And I'm not doing this to protect those two people downstream. I'm also doing it to get water building up in his culvert to the point that it, it gets into your garage.
Well, it's going to keep my horse.
And if there's, and there's, of course, there's a sewer line along there that Johnny can tell you that the leakage that goes into that sewer line when we get these major rains increases our sewage charges that we have to pay Garland because of the amount of flow that's getting in. That's, which is a whole other issue that you guys don't necessarily, I guess maybe you could, but it's, I think we just need to maybe tap the brakes for a minute here and make sure that we've looked at, get, get the input from, from what we know today.
So, Jim, let me just ask this question. We started at six o'clock, it's going to be ten in ten minutes. This is an important topic because we begin, I'm one of those guys who hate to kick the can down the road. I just don't like it. So we got to get to it and make this decision, right? I'm going to ask you something. I saw an email from Carol Wanda, and Carol Wanda is one of the four measure track committee of Hesh. She has some really open-ended questions. I mean, she just, I forgot, maybe twenty or thirty questions, I thought she got a lot of questions. She's not biased on me, she's, her questions include. She want, she was asking whether everybody can answer that question, kind of set the drawdown. I don't know that you guys seen the questions or not. So basically, she's asking, do you want to serve the property? She's even asking that question. Do you want really Christian facility? Do you want to operate by council or town? Or do you want to operate by independent party? So here's a, she, I have one to ask, before we go spend too much money, it wasn't rush. At least we can have a consensus on it. So you have not seen this question, have you?
I agree with that.
So, so the only reason I said is, I like those questions, these open-ended questions. She was not trying to strike anybody one way or the other, right? So would it be about to, I'll just send that question out to four B and council. I don't know about the how to plan payout, I really don't know, right? Is that what, what, what Carol Wanda should do?
Well, she's just throwing those questions out just so that we think about it.
Okay, so it's not going to be easy to think of a thirty questions in the room, right?
Exactly.
So would it be what to ask, any of?
What's on the table right now, in my opinion, is do we spend sixteen thousand dollars for an RFQ over here or do we spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars for an RFQ over there? I mean, that's what it is. He's got thirty, forty thousand, we're thinking sixteen. So I mean, we got to figure out who's going to do an RFQ. Are we going to do one to find the best use? Are we going to do one to maintain the equestrian look that we, that pre-dis council moved forward on?
Well, one of the other things I wanted to say about.
Wherever we're anywhere till we do that.
Where we are now is the company that we chose, the Equestrian Expert, has a lot of experience designing everything from a ten-million-dollar facility down to a less-than-million-dollar facility. And one of the things that was most impressive is that everything that she does takes into account the feel of the town or the property that she's designing for. So what we would ultimately get in a design from her, she can tailor to how much money we want to spend. She's able to give us options as far as, this is what you can do for this amount, this is what you can do for this amount. And she can make sure that it's in keeping with the way we want Sunnyvale to look.
I wish, what should we give one?
She's working with David McCaskill.
Yes.
Who is this, she?
What is her name here?
Consulting, no, this man's not him.
She's an equestrian and barn building expert. That's all she does.
And she will operate or she, like, why is the one?
She's the one.
She's just going to, she's going to sort and.
She'd say the RFQ.
She's the RFQ.
Get a bit on.
You guys are all reset.
So anything that keeps in mind is, I guess, when looking at what to move forward with this property on is Lyle came to me this afternoon and said, "Don't get rid of my detention pond." So yes, the pond is a huge asset that has to stay on that property. Just the one for this to the east.
There's actually two on there. There's so much rain, yeah. And that one hasn't had anything in it, and you generally remember better that. There used to literally be a pond there, it didn't dry up, but that was a long time ago. And I don't remember what they did to keep it from happening.
That's not right. I mean, that's not a built-up pond.
It's not really a built-up pond, it's just a low area in there. And because of what's also saturated, it's got water in it.
So we have, you know, the Homestead and clearly the state strains in there now. He's working on a plan for something else as well that would potentially drain into that property. So keeping that side of it is going to be an essential piece that is going to pretty much have to stay.
Probably has to stay in open land anyway to do all that, so it's going to be.
But I think Lyle needs to get further down his path, and I hate to kick that can down the road, but there's the technical side of this that I think needs to be better understood.
Well, that doesn't prevent us from wanting to.
The third option is just do nothing.
Well, I think it does.
We've done nothing for thirty years.
I think that's something, Jim, wouldn't you agree on that?
I don't disagree, but if we can't come to some agreement, we can always not like it.
That's the other side of this equation right now is, yes, these are pictures right here that our building official went out.
You'd have to tear it all down.
Did the tear it all down.
It's pretty bad. It's all the same reason.
Here's what our building official has said, that right now there are so many code violations out there being exposed to electrical wire, improper installation of electric, unsafe. There's a lot of safety issues that are out there right now.
My question when we went back to the.
And in his professional opinion, he would recommend demolition of all structures there.
My question about that, when we acquired the property and had the lease agreement, was what liabilities the town have? Some of the kids out there.
Yeah, and that's what.
Somebody gets electrocuted.
Right, that's actually, I brought it up in our meeting, what's our liability? Both the structure as it is and then moving forward, moving forward. Exactly, exactly.
Wait, I'm waiting.
Right.
So we can't leave it.
What will our liability once we actually build something? So we had to have to think about that, you know? So every, you know, you guys have been thinking about this for years. We had the committee that's been set up and it's thought about it and whatnot. My concern was just making sure we had options. Sounds like we maybe will have a fishing, a pond for fishing on one side and then horses on one side, you know? So.
And a trail.
And trails.
He mainly wanted a trail, then also had hope.
The trails were the main part.
Right. And, and I love.
We find it clean, barely any bit of weight on the property. We're all for that, but in equestrian, I guess, I actually personally have a problem with the use of equestrian centers. That's not.
So maybe, right, so maybe we just, maybe semantics, maybe it's just, just, you know, keeping the horses there.
A stable, whatever.
That's why we called it Sunnyvale Stables, it's not called Equestrian Center because of that same.
Well, still, giving it a name implies it's a pretty grand thing.
It's Sunnyvale Stables.
So what are your feelings, Sarah?
No, I, I guess, me personally, just me by myself, I, my desire for this property is to have it nice, clean trails and not have damaged buildings. And if we have.
Own it by who?
The town wants to own it, we have it as a park, and we have the trails connecting to our other trail system as part of our match of the plan. If we can find a nice way to keep the horses and keep it, you know, natural looking, that's great. But I'm not in favor of spending hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to create an equestrian center. That's my personal.
So the small.
And that wasn't our goal.
Real quick here, real quick here. And the committee is not looking at, like I said, Lone Star Park. I mean, we're trying, we know this is a liability, that's what we were looking at. It's a liability for the town as it sits. We need to do something. If somebody gets out there and gets hurt, they're not going to come to four B. They're going to come to county council.
So I'm hearing Jim, and I'm hearing you, and I'm hearing Kevin, and y'all are saying it needs to make financial sense. With the person that's contracted already, I believe he could do what Kevin's asking for in terms of do the thing for the horse plan. And then potentially throw in Plan B and C to, here's what, based on my experience, could potentially be other uses for this or best uses of it.
If we change the RFQ, we have to go back out for it.
For bid.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I don't think there's a lot of other options, so maybe, you know, I'm not trying to make a speed bump, I don't think there's a lot of other options. The ground slopes down to the one side where there's all the water pooling up, you know? It's, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of options there.
No, it's in a flat plain, no matter what you do on that property, whether we build stables or something completely different, it's going to have to be built up. I mean, that's just, there's no way around that, no matter what you do to that property.
It's going to have an impact on the number of stalls and the number of animals you can have on the property when you, when you know that.
Right, it sounds like we do need to wait for the, the drainage study to come back and then also allow to figure out if he wants to make another detention pond for our.
How long they have enough data? Maybe he knows now.
But, but I guess, you know, maybe if we move forward, you know, I think the consultants should definitely talk to.
How long do we wait to make it safe?
I, see, I think we can, it's so unsafe, it's a danger, it's really scary out there. I think we do need.
Now, we have an official report from a building guy, we have a lot of threat.
I think, I think.
The only way to make it safe is to, a victim and, and that was, when this was originally done, they were given one year, nothing's going to hap, well, it's now been asked a year, but.
We've got new tenants out there that are taking this over that, you know, they don't know that all this is an issue, so I mean.
Really?
It's been there for how many years? So nobody's ever said anything to this point. So now, because we are actually taking a look at it, we're seeing what's out there.
Here's the thing, with, with the people that are in charge, I mean, they're nice, they're nice people, okay? They have spent a ton of money of their own on repairing, fixing what they can, using whatever they can, okay? So they, they've done a lot themselves, but it's still a bad situation. They're just out there patchworking because they don't know what we're going to do.
Can we, would we be allowed to spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars to hire somebody to get this thing up to code at least?
I think it's not going to get up to code.
No, get somebody to tell us that, I mean, get somebody down there.
I can tell you that, Brian, it won't cost you a dime.
We appreciate your expert opinion.
Our building official has said that this is not up to code, that this is.
I know it's not, but I think Brian's saying, can we spend some money to fix it?
Well, we fix it, demo it, rebuild.
I know, and you're getting rid of the very reason we're keeping it. If we have to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know how we can even fix the horses when we just posted
how we're saving the horses. I mean, what kind of PR nightmare is that going to be?
I, I think we need to take action, I think we, if it's that, if that's.
I posted it, I posted it because that was what was, the direction was given at the last year when it was done.
What is this, this?
Somebody said, "Who posted it?" I said, "I posted it" because that's what the council decision was at the date they were stationed to purchase the property.
From town's perspective, what do you think we should do?
To me, when the property was purchased, it was very clear that the council's desire was that those horses would stay. I think we ought to make the stable safe. And if it means we rebuild stables cheaply, quickly, I think that's what we should do. And then we can figure out long-term. But I think our immediate need.
We got to think about the town property because when you start doing things per town with regulations, we got to build a concrete parking lot.
Yeah, that's why.
We got to think about things that we're going to have to do.
I know, but if this is not our property and the inspector went in there to, we condemn it. That's what we would do. We condemn that building.
Oh, and done it thirty years.
I know, but I'm just saying, now that we've had a building that should go out there, it's.
And expect them to want to go out there.
And put his recommendations in writing.
Yeah, and put his recommendation to writing, we're kind of, we're kind of in a bind.
Yeah, we're going to make that slide, it's the cat's out of the bag.
Yeah, yeah, it's, if there's anybody else, knowing that, we would condemn that building, just like that's possible before.
So I think we kind of have to go through with the RFQ to show that we're actually trying to move forward with a plan to replace these dilapidated buildings. And then we have to come up with a plan to house the horses while something else is being built anyway. There has to be some sort.
So Nikki, when they come back with this plan, somebody's a plug in the way. Then what happens, I see that.
Well, we have to get. Pick the cheap option. Right, the cheap option, that's for us as a town, and we can choose whether we want to move forward with that.
I know, my, my question is, does anybody think the town is going to own it? Or we are talking about still letting that party own it? Do you want to, do we want to be the horse business or do you want to just?
No, we never had that envisioned either.
Okay, I got it, I'm just going to walk into the process in my mind, just going to check out the horses, right?
We don't actually know that.
Right, we don't know for sure.
We could create.
Okay, so this is.
We could fit it out to the third party.
Okay.
All kinds of options we could do. We could let equestrian or something like that run the thing.
So, so my last is, when this RFQ, let's say if you enter, when they enter this RFQ, what does that person come back with?
Comes back with a plan with options and costs, and then.
So the cost is an opinion at that time, right? Cost is an opinion, the reason is, if you go and let someone else do it, they're going to, this is the cost.
It's, it's like an OPCC, like an opinion of probable construction costs, the same that you would get on an engineered project.
Then what is it, we go for that RFQ at that time?
So you would send it out for bid if that's what you wanted to do. If you got the, got the plan back and you wanted to move forward with that, you'd send it out for bid.
This is what we want you to build?
Yeah, we'd say, "Here are all the specs, here's what we want, tell us what you'll build it for." Just like you do any other.
You spent some money, you built any orders?
Well, that's up to you. That's up to you. So, but if you wanted it to be a municipal facility.
We'll always own it until we sell it to somebody else. So we can operate it ourselves.
Yeah.
We can lease it out to somebody else, or we can sell it.
So that's my question, right? Let's say if you don't operate it, I'm just quoting, if you're going to lease it out, does this RFQ have? I'm asking, I'm not telling you, no, I'm just asking.
If we lease it out, that means we would build it and then lease it to the operator.
So you're going to spend the money, you build it, then you're going to lease it.
If we do that approach, if you do the, another approach, you do a land lease.
Right.
And you give them a long-term, really cheap land lease, but then they build and run, and they make all the profit, and we have our trail. And then in fifty years, you're like, okay, well, then you renegotiate the.
So would that, would that site be what we're looking for? Or do you still want that big master?
Give us guidance as well as whoever the potential operator would be.
That's a win if you can find a way to operate it and bring it up to code.
I'm impressed by that, we're going to find anybody.
Yeah, I get it, we kick out the existing.
Yeah, because most horse people, I mean, similar to what Larry said, I've talked to you, so it's not big enough to be profitable. So, it's more of a, it's more of a HOA.
So, the individual that leased it for the first year operation sent me her financials, and they did not make any money on leasing the property out. They're not making money.
She's limited what she can ask for because of the state of the facilities as they are.
So, if you, if you send out, say that it could be like a certified lease with somebody, and they want to come back with an accepted reply, what all that maybe, right? That means, yeah, the company has to go, or he or she wants to do the same thing.
I think from the discussions that we, or the input we've gotten back from the experts we've talked to, I don't know for sure that this is true, but it seems unlikely that that property could be something that would be profitable enough for someone to come in and operate it and build. It's not big enough, you know?
Okay, so, the option of giving the property away, basically leasing it out for $1, is not going to happen, based on that opinion?
From what I've heard so far, that's my opinion.
Okay, so, then what happens at that time? So, that means, okay, let's just keep the option away. Then, the option of being-
Well, Larry and I were Air Force people, I grew up on an Air Force base, and you had horse stables that were maybe for 15 people, it was government-owned facility, you know, and somebody got paid to run it through MWR, but I mean, it's going to be a small 10 to 15 horse facility, when you have a professional look at it, they're not going to say you could put 25 horses out there. And I don't know what the going rate is, but I was hearing, for a nice place, you know, five, 600 a month, you know?
I met with a lady in Garland off of Guthrie Road, that runs, a nice, well, it's a decent facility. And she only has like 10 stalls there, and, I mean, she does training, she does riding, whatever else she does, she makes money. Clearly, she's doing okay, but-
Does she want 10 more?
Definitely.
She, her opinion was, if we put something, because she knows exactly where it's at, and her opinion was, you will feel that, if you have a decent stable-
You'll feel it.
You'll feel that in a heartbeat, and most of the people will be from Sunnyvale.
So, Mike, the question is, who would build it? In that, in that vein, I'm just trying to get to-
In that vein, it would have to be the town.
It would have to be us.
Company you want to spend, have, you know, wherever 300, 400,000 dollars to build a stable.
Right.
Run it.
And you would do it as a-
No, we wouldn't run it.
No, someone else would run it.
Someone's running.
You want to spend that?
You'd potentially-
Is that budget out of your own today?
Yeah.
I, I could go 300, 400,000, I mean, I'm okay with that.
So, the reason means, at no cost, right? Basically, no cost.
It's leased out right now, that lady owns it.
Yeah, but we are no expert in that.
Well, we don't, but if we built the thing, right, she might run it for the same thing.
That's true.
Somebody's going to lease it.
So, the question, yeah, I got it, I'm just trying to walk through the process in my mind, so that means, it's the decision that, as a quality of life expansion, I'd be saying that somebody for me, maybe go and spend 400,000, and that's it, just like we get part, with no other one, is that what we're saying?
Well, is the town willing to pitch in some money as well? Not just the 4Bs, Equestrian, Glacier property, it's also the town, so, I mean, there needs to be a, we might have to report you to a violation.
But we don't even know what that cost is.
I know.
Yeah, but maybe, so, would the RFQ get us to that, this point of building this stable?
The RFQ will get us to the point of being able to determine the cost and what we see as cost.
I don't see, I don't see what the difference is in spending 300, 400,000 to build a stable, and spending 300, 400,000 to build three ball darts.
Horse splash pad.
Horse splash pad.
I agree with that.
There's a limited number of people in this town who are going to use it. There's a limited number of people in this town who are going to use a horse pasture. But everybody's going to see it, everybody's going to benefit from the green space, you know, I don't see the difference. Okay, so, okay, so I think, yeah.
As long as the RFQ is, I mean, they, I haven't looked at it, it includes the low cost and the not medium cost, we don't need to look at the $10 million.
We were very explicit about the fact that we were cheap.
Okay, so, so, I think we are coming to somewhere, so we talked about horse, sounds like we're willing to do it, so, that's that part, currently, the RFP will include two things, right?
The trade and the horse. Because the trail is a done deal. You know, the trail is done, we've already talked to the town about that, the trail is going down from the connection behind the falls, it's already there, concrete is already there, going to connect and run up trip between there and the fence, and connect up at Jopson in some kind of maneuver to go across the, I don't know exactly where it is.
I'm trying to get to a point, but I know, just Kevin, you mentioned about, you want to include other options, are we still on that request?
I, I mean, I don't think there's-
Well, I think you have your point about the fishing here.
Exactly.
We actually talked about a gazebo or something.
Fishing here-
Right, right, but, yeah, no.
Fishing here problem is accessed by the public through the horse pasture.
And the parking lot. Yeah. Where the devil's rail was coming from the north, and so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's access, the fishing here is a good deal, but you're going to have to cut the public off from the horses, which takes up half the pasture. Well, it takes up a good portion, because you got to go to the parking lot.
I feel like a community, based on the number of people I see fishing out my backyard every day, I feel we're overrun with a need for more fishing. I mean, there's maybe-
Paul's gonna have eight fish in the horn park, there'd be 15 people fishing every day.
Now, one thing, we were talking about with Samuel Farms across the place, if you did end up with a decent thing there, and encouraged, and we mowed some trails, people could take their horses across the street, and actually really enjoy riding out there.
So, last, one last question from my perspective, is the expectation that if horses are built there, stables, put there, whatever, that there'll be some sort of a parking area and maybe covered pavilion or something, so people can actually enjoy their horses? Or we're just talking about enjoying it when you're driving down the road?
Not, not a pavilion.
It would have to include parking, because it's-
There's already parking.
It has to be concrete.
Has to be concrete.
Is that all part of the RFP?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, I think we should move forward, I really do, we need to do something.
Only two things, right? Trades and equipment facility, just want to make sure.
That's all we talked about.
We won't include fishing.
And a bowling alley.
You can fish the horse back, yes. Ever see that one?
I would as well, probably. Just for the ease.
Okay, so, Cam, this isn't an actual meeting, so you can't take official actions, workshop, so just keep in mind, you'll have to, you'll have to put it back on the agenda again, just to make sure everybody knows.
Do we have it on? Crazy.
Well, I'm going to throw another wrench in there.
Okay, how big is the wrench?
Pretty big.
Okay. Keep an eye on that.
Just because I just got another reminder about it. Fire chief wants to know about the possibility of putting a fire station on that property.
What plan?
Pleasure.
Pleasure. That's up to the town.
Town council can discuss it. You go, you go, fire station there.